Commissioners Board of Work session, it is Wednesday, September seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. It is nine oh eight A M. This is set to go until two thirty P M. So it's a long day for us. Um, this is a hybrid meeting. We're in Building One, Room two eighty. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. I'm Carolina Maia. I'm the Chair of the Board. To my right is Vice Chair Taya Mensah. To my left is Commissioner Gary Edwards. In the boardroom, we also have County Manager Ramiro Chavez, Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell. We have financial staff with us as well as our executive aides, uh, Robin Court, Sarah Devell, and Christina Cooper. We're joining us for the Budget Review Work Session this morning. And so we're starting with some exciting things, I see, so.
We are starting with some exciting things. Uh, thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, Robin Campbell, Assistant County Manager. And we are, uh, on, uh, day two of the preview of the midterm adjustment to the budget and what two thousand and twenty-three is going to look like. Today, we're going to, um, continue the overview that we started yesterday morning. Uh, we're gonna talk about, uh, the status of where we are to date this year. Um, we will discuss sales tax trends and where we think those are going. Uh, we'll have some property tax information. And it is hot off the press. Uh, I apologize that we're starting a little late this morning, but the new information is significant. Um, so I wanted to put together something to be able to give you information on that. Um, we'll start to look at the forecast model, the interactive model that you're aware of. And then we'll start to give you information on, um, what the offices and departments have requested in the preliminary and where that would take us. You'll get historic information on trends for spending, workforce reversions. Uh, and then, um, the goal is on Monday for commissioners to set a target spending level so that when we start to do the reviews in October, um, you'll have an idea about how much you can afford. So that's the goal over today and Monday. But we're going to start with something very exciting. You may recall, I'm, I'm sure you can't forget, the huge binders that we normally give you, uh, when we start the budget review. And what I heard, uh, last year, it, I thought it was kind of funny because every person that came in to discuss budget with you commented on your binders and how big they were. Um, and we crammed a lot of information into those binders. But they really are quite unwieldy and difficult to work with. And one of the things I heard loud and clear is that you were hoping to find a way that we could automate the binders. Uh, so I've been kicking that idea around all year. And when Nicole joined us, um, one of the things that I shared with her is we want to find a way to automate the binders. So she took that on. And we haven't found new software yet. So we're not quite where we want to go. But Nicole has found a way to bridge the gap.
Yes.
And this year, we are going to try an electronic version of the budget documents. So we're gonna start this morning, and I'm gonna turn it over to Nicole and have her do a little demo for you, a bit of training on how we're going to use the new equipment this year. And we've invited the, uh, your assistants to join us today so that they also learn and can help you as we use the new technology. So I'm gonna turn it over to Nicole.
Thank you, Robin. Yes, so, um, I was tasked with finding a way to make the budget automated. And so doing with the software that we already have, um, the devices that are already current here at the county and working with I T, um, it was just wonderful what they were able to do and find what we already had, um, in supply. And so today, we will be handing out, uh, surfaces that were already in supply here as well as some, uh, stylus pens to help you, um, be automated. So I'm gonna start handing them out.
So this is a no-cost solution, by the way, that Nicole has come up with, which is quite impressive. Yeah. Because when we find software that's gonna cost a little money.
So is everybody in the room getting one right now?
I think so.
So this is a Surface Pro four. So if you'd rather use a device that you already have, that's fine. But just so that everyone is using the same exact device, we did pull them from Surface. So if you'd like one, we definitely have it.
Okay, good. I don't think Ty will take one.
These models are, um, ones that I believe were purchased with the coronavirus, but so not even an impact to the general fund at the time we bought them. And now we have a, we don't have a wearful house full of extra computers, but we did have quite a bit of that.
Never know, might we might just stumble into the modern era.
That's part of why it's an exciting morning.
So you need that.
Yeah, why? Because a power bank will help it stay longer, will help the battery last longer.
And then actually your phone will travel to it, plug into it too.
Definitely.
Check it out. Yeah, because it's not.
Yeah, you want to build a portable USB port.
Awesome. If you don't mind grabbing a battery box.
Yeah.
Nicole, I have a, um.
Yep, even one for you.
Not a, not a.
Just a case.
No, this, this.
Oh, I thought you were, I'm sorry. I thought you were pointing to your whole Surface. I'm like, oh, there it is.
No, I'm pointing to the stylus.
I couldn't see the stylus.
Well, here's the power bank stuff too.
Yeah, the power button.
So now you have two sty-, you have a stylie.
Because the.
Okay.
Tyler, I was like, no.
The stylus got the, like, it's gonna charge it.
Yeah.
This is just a.
Well, there's a stylus pen in here to.
It has to be plugged in.
Yes.
But, but there's also made if you don't have a plan.
We do have, um, we have.
So here's our external, it's already charged. So you can plug in.
But then if you need to charge it.
Boy, you don't have.
And then I brought it to the box.
Yeah. Yeah, Brian, see?
I'm on it.
Brian's training. Yeah, Brian is an excellent hire.
Thank you.
Can I say another word more loudly? Brian is an excellent hire in I T. He has been a great resource and he is wonderful in being able to.
So that's the back of it. So this way.
It has a magnet. Ice has a magnet on it.
Yeah, all of these have magnets as well.
I think you just touch it.
Oh. That's exciting.
So I have some instructions here. I wanted to show. Okay, just turn it on by now. Maybe plug it in or maybe instead.
Here's the serial number.
Thank you, Brian. Will you kind of help us?
Um, I think that's the thought.
This mine's not turning on. And then. Uh-huh.
Is, is Caroline on there?
And you're using it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a perfect.
This is not, uh, mine has a little A that tells me to charge. It's useful. This one doesn't seem to have batteries or any charge.
So we can jump right to what's inside your box if that's what everyone's interested in. Let's do that first then. So everyone has a box that looks like this. And everyone has the same contents that are inside that box.
No.
So the first thing you'll see is a stylus in there. And we can get into the functionality of it. So you can, but let's just go through the items that are in there.
Oh, probably one.
Next, you'll see it says Surface Power Bank.
We'll just, can we just swap those down?
So one just says power bank, the one says Surface Power Bank. The Surface Power Bank works with the cord that has like this long piece on it.
Yeah, I think wrong.
That would be used to plug into your actual device. So a regular power cord. And that comes with the plug here, this outline right here. So you would open that one, the one that has the prong that goes into an outlet.
Yeah.
It would also go into the back of the Surface Power Bank that looks like this.
So it may have a dual purpose of charging and powering at the same time.
You would plug that into there.
Okay, great.
That's just if we need it right now.
Right. So this is how this works inside there. So if you just needed to charge, you don't want to use a.
My battery's like three quarters.
Everyone should be, um, charged.
This all.
Okay, the light's on.
So this is just the plug into a regular outlet. That's how that works. So the one where this in this, that goes into your actual.
Well, that's the personal that I prepared so last week.
So this in would go into the side of the Surface.
No worries. Yeah, that makes sense that it could die in that time, so.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's mine as well.
So the, the, um, the downside of the Surface is the batteries don't last.
Right.
You need to keep it so.
So we would always be needing, needing to be plugged in.
Which is why we need to, but you need some kind of power.
Even for this little session today?
But you know, we're doing a long day.
Because this till two thirty today, we do that long and you're using it the entire time today.
Um.
Mine lasts, mine lasts like three, four hours. But if you, we're in like an all-day session, you'll need power for the afternoon or whatever.
Right. My new one can get me through a whole agenda session.
Yeah.
But the older ones, no, it would die after about two hours.
Are these older? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, they are a little older, so, so you will want to have some type of power.
So that's the other item. So this is a power bank. This stores power.
I like the picture on the screen.
It's charged, it's not charged, is it?
This is already charged for you as well. So if you're using this one, the, you want to use your power bank now.
Yeah.
You would unplug the prong cord that you're going to. If you don't need that anymore. We're gonna use the power bank.
Okay.
There is a cord that has two ends that are yellow circles.
Hey, Brian.
Yeah.
This won't turn.
Sorry. Well, you need the, for this, you need the two-circled cord.
I don't know why it comes on going on.
Yeah.
It might, might have gotten too low on the.
So your power button on this power cord is.
Sometimes it won't power on the two circles.
This silver circle here on the right. So it's, that's the power button for the bank. When you push it, the lights will turn green.
Oh, it keeps turning off because of the power.
So I tried to charge mine and it turned it on and it didn't.
So yours is charged.
Yeah.
So unless you want to, we don't need to plug it in right now or.
I just want to see how it works.
Yeah, how it works.
So. I want to see how this is.
So you would, this would be like if you wanted to do an extent, like your power bank, you wanted to charge at the same time.
Yeah.
Oh, charge the power bank. I got you.
Yeah.
It goes directly right from there.
Yeah, so the one that's in the computer will go into the outlet that says output on the power bank. So there is a gray silver button here that's on. Right next to it is a blue circle and that one says output. You would take your circle cord that is plugged into your Surface and you would plug it into the output. And you should see that your device has the little charging button, like icon at the bottom right on your screen.
Are they green?
That's why.
These, they're not actually labeled with a name, though, like, oh, go ahead and put.
No.
Just go with by what you're telling us.
Well, I, I was gonna go through a certain order, but we kind of dropped to the box.
No, that's, that's fine.
But in on the sheet that I sent you, that you guys have on page, let's find the page number, page two, it outlines your Surface Pro. It has like, this is where your power is. And it says, number one, this is your touchscreen. This is your camera. This is your charging ports.
How do we turn our power bank off?
So it automatically.
That's just to check the battery charge level. It will turn off automatically once.
Yeah, you got it.
What? And that light came on at some point?
Oh, it's.
It's a flashlight.
The, yeah, there's a flashlight that can on and off.
Oh, yeah, you push it again. Yeah.
Hold it down and it'll go off. It's a flashlight.
It will, those will turn off automatically once, yes.
Just unplug it and it's right.
Is your computer not turning on?
Well, the light's not on.
But it's charging, I think. Maybe it's charging up here that the power bank.
It seems like the battery is not coming in.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the light's not on, which means it's not charging.
We can check it out so that it can do a surface.
We can match, we can match my.
Well, it already looks.
I'm writing with my real speed.
I'll take out, I'm recording it.
If it doesn't, the light is still not on, which means.
It's just doing.
Yeah, it's gonna, yeah. It should pass through.
Like it drives it out of right.
It should pass through, but if three minutes fully done, it might as well.
And then, like saying, if it's a five-year document, and it'll transcribe, and then you'll be like three documents, you know, it's.
But your Surface is full, so.
Like, sometimes it'll have a whole one and then pieces of it, or it'll bring it all to pieces and keep repeating.
Yeah, but your light's.
Or.
Does the flashlight have to be on when you're doing it?
It's working. So you see this right here is your battery light. And it has this little plug here and that's the instruction.
It shows that this thing flashing.
Yep. And that tells you how far, how much of a charge you have.
So my light's, mine's different from his.
I just scrambled.
So hold this button down, that'll make your flashlight go away.
And does it matter which way you have this plugged in?
There you go. So you go let go now?
This thing right here, does that matter?
Nope.
No.
Either, either way, it'll take it either way.
Yep.
What a deal. What's that?
I'm impressed. Good job.
You sounded excited about it.
You're trying to use it so the.
Is that called email or just the?
Just your, uh, from here about.
His light is not on on his power cord.
I kind of like it when stuff doesn't work. It, it validates my position.
It validates my. But you sounded really excited about yours.
Oh, well, I'm with it. Hey, I'm gonna step right into the modern era.
Twenty twenty-two might be that year.
December twenty twenty-four.
We're almost all together.
Sorry.
Want to move on? Okay. So then I'm gonna kind of, I'm gonna skip back to page one of these instructions so you know what I'm speaking about. And I just wanted to show you how to turn on your devices. If you haven't already, the power button is over here on the left-hand side. That's where your power is. So you would turn that on and you would log in. Does anyone need any help logging in? We can start logging in.
Don't log in.
Well, I, either we're gonna do me or you. Because you don't even know how to.
Well, I'm just gonna need the app.
He doesn't even know, huh?
Yeah, you can just do the login.
So you'll go to that first screen where it's a system user and click okay.
Oh, I don't have to do the extension?
Put in your username and password.
Well, it's hard to dislike this because it's got a heck of a good picture on the screen.
Small wins.
We use.
I got it. It seemed like a motion video or something.
I can log you in if you want me to.
I do. I just want to fiddle along here with everything just to see.
Right. So then the next section here is just explaining some more of the features along your, uh, your Surface here. One of the things to know is that your keyboard does patch. So we are gonna use this with our stylus. We might want to do that. And you can hold it into your hand. To be able to write when we start bringing it aside.
Just no dots.
Yeah.
As that kicks in in the back, you guys feel like you all have that already.
Because there was some confusion of it sometime back. Let's remove this here. I forget.
It has an S.
So we just keep moving on to the stylus pen. We're ready to do that now. So it has a tip at the end here. That's what you would use to write. So you put this on your touchscreen and you can write with it. It has, uh, on the front side right here where it's flat, that's a magnet as you just all tie and you can click it to the side. So this way you won't lose, hopefully, your stylus because you can just attach it to it quick. It's a magnet.
So it has a magnet on the side.
On the side.
Oh, cool. That's wishful thinking.
I didn't know how to, I didn't know how to right-click.
Right there.
Yep, and that's a right-click.
I thought that was just like part of the magnet.
Yep.
So that's good enough.
Pretty cool, right? Yep, so you noticed that too in the front on that flat side.
You're gonna make me say it's cool.
It's pretty cool.
You, you just said.
It is recorded from last Saturday.
And so this is a right-click. So when you're using your mouse and you need it to right-click, you can use this function, this gray button here on the front of your pen, just like if you were using your mouse. So you know, when you use your mouse, you need to select more than one item. You would right-click and drag. You'll use this function the same way.
But that's if it's touching the screen.
It's when it's touching the screen. So when you're writing and say you want to highlight something or you wanted to group something some kind of way, you would use it as your right-click on your mouse. And then the top, there is a button up here. You can use this to erase. You'll also use it to pair, right? If you wanted to pair this with that.
It should pair automatically because of the proximity. But if you have, if you need to, that's what.
You're erasing from this.
I think there's like certain, there's certain, um, functions that you can set up to do shortcuts. And you can use your top button to do those type of shortcuts when you guys get really into it and you find there's things that you want. Okay, so, um, the first thing I wanted to do is now that we have all our devices, is go ahead and jump into trying to use the stylus and how it could work. Um, so let's first navigate to a file. And so if you go down to your, at the bottom of the screen, there is a folder. If you go to the folder, we're gonna go to the K drive.
And when you say go to it, that means with the little.
Yeah, so you can use your stylus as a mouse or you can use the mouse pad.
Okay.
So you can click it with your stylus here.
There, and you have to click on the left side of the pad.
Okay, left.
And then on the left here. And then on the left hand side, there should be something that says this PC. If you click that. You should be able to find the K drive, the commissioners' drive. We're gonna select that. Did you guys talk about it?
Wait, what are we doing?
We're going to the K drive.
I should share my screen.
Sorry, I started checking email.
We're right here.
Yeah, Sarah.
Twenty twenty three.
You're kind of, you're battling, battling the period.
I'm there.
Okay, there you go, hook on it. You know what you're doing.
No, I'd be glad to see that.
We're gonna navigate to the second folder that says twenty twenty three budget development and I'm gonna share my.
No, like there's no instruction about either.
The twenty twenty three budget development. Twenty twenty three budget development, yeah.
And then.
I know mine was, but I was.
What are you making?
Do we go, no, do we go into each of our packets?
I guess you touch it again.
Uh no, so go to digital instructions first.
Okay.
And we're gonna pick uh the word exercise.
Fixing all the exercise.
Word, I'm sorry.
That's our instruction. I deleted that, oh.
Unable.
I deleted it.
Okay, I could get it there.
I don't know how I did that.
No worries.
Was it good?
Uh.
My error was I deleted from right here.
Yeah, so it might be on my desktop now.
So can we close out of that?
No.
So at the top right hand corner, click close the X.
The X right over here.
Okay.
We're gonna have to improvise.
It's it's back, it's back.
Did you put it back already?
To Brian, my friend Brian did.
No.
Okay.
Okay, everyone's already closed.
Okay, now would you have to do that again?
Well, if you've already closed, we'll just keep it, everyone's closed, we'll go this way, so just open up Word, you see on your desktop, Word there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No.
Okay, okay. See your Word is?
Yeah, I'm exiting now.
And then open up a blank document.
It's like you're gonna type stuff, like if I type a letter, that's the program that you use.
Yep, yeah, that's how I have Word.
You're not, but she's telling us it's part of instruction.
Okay, so if you open up Word and you have your stylus now, you can start literally just writing on the screen, anything you'd like, just hello.
You want us to open a blank document?
Yes.
Alright, Sarah, my screen is not showing.
It's gonna be fun, right?
In sharing.
I feel like I'm at the grocery store.
Writing.
No, writing my name.
Oh, like on the.
Denied. How do you, you can erase.
And you can erase if you just turn your pen around and just erase the screen.
Oh my gosh.
Sorry, I'm.
So what, maybe you're gonna get to this, but like I.
My screen between the Y and the E there, I see a dot.
What programs does does that function work in, cause.
Probably. Take a dot.
Yes.
To do it.
Okay, it works in Word, but I've, there's other documents where you can't do that.
So it works in the Microsoft. Uh the Microsoft Office Suite, it works in those, so it works in Note, Excel, Word, it works in PowerPoint, it works in those applications out of Microsoft.
Microsoft Office.
And it works in a PDF.
And it also works in a PDF with limited functionality, but it can still use in PDFs as well.
Okay, looks like.
Thought you didn't want what you're doing.
Oh, it's gonna be.
We've been using comments.
It's not, it doesn't have.
We've been using sticky notes, you know, with the comments, so I'm curious to see if there's a way.
I'm gonna mess with it.
Gotta wait for her.
It works better.
It's okay, I forget mine a lot too. Well, I just don't, I've never been, I don't care, I mean, it's not my thing, so.
We need to leave the ones that's stupid.
But I'm just, you know, I'm gonna go.
So sticky notes is not, don't worry.
When I get to this, I was like.
No, it's. No, you use sticky notes with different ways, but sticky notes inside.
You never know, you might end up in a white, maybe you're like.
Okay.
You have found a way for them to save their notes in a PDF file.
They're learning something.
Yes.
Using the.
With the with the free software, not the full.
Yes, with the free software, you don't have to have a full version.
Yeah. Okay.
So.
Okay, well, good, I don't know how to do that.
So we're gonna.
We're gonna do it.
Finish it.
We're gonna do a demo that.
We're gonna do a demo, that's how.
Is it sticky? sticky notes is like in Word, how you record like just.
Okay, so you would file and save this as.
Like a document.
A document inside your folder that was in um the budget development area.
We need to get Romero.
And I don't have a folder.
I can make you folder.
You don't need it on the folder.
So in twenty twenty three budget development. Did you hear that too apparently not?
It's a material.
Yeah.
We're gonna draw a figure and that's what you need.
Well, you don't know.
Well, you don't.
Notes.
So in the folder that we were in, we're assembling our budget development.
So if you made notes on.
So it should be K drive, twenty twenty three budget development.
Yeah. Okay, let's.
So go back to the big one. From save as, you're gonna take it into twenty twenty three budget development folder.
We go. And then.
Sarah.
Sarah.
You know the folder, just your last name.
The document. The document with whatever I still have.
Just read it.
This is where you will want to say. You see here, all Robert also wants a folder, alright.
So I'm just gonna keep going, if I need to come back as well, so at the top of your screen in in Word, you'll see
Oh, I don't know, it's on the.
It's just. I made it.
uh file, home, insert, draw. When you wanna make changes to what it is that you're writing, maybe the color or the thickness or you wanna highlight, you would have to click draw at the top. And then you have these options, you have an arrow, you have a lasso, a pencil there, you also have like a pen, highlighters, pencils. Different options up here, you would select whichever one you want, so say you wanted the one that's red. You would click that one, right next to it, on the right hand side, there's an arrow pointing down. If you select that, this is where you can change your thickness, you can change your color that you'd like to use, so if you like a thicker pen and you're writing on a document that's already using black ink, so if you wanna write in red or pink, yellow, orange, any color you want, you can do that. And then you just click that arrow again, it'll close it and then you can write again what it is that you wanted to write.
And this is very cool.
This is fun. I got the rainbow.
But this, but this is just like.
I know, I know, that's exactly what I want to.
Man, does this have spell check?
The rainbow? Uh I think it, yes, it does, it underlines just like Word would if you spelled something incorrectly and then you could right click and change that.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, the red one.
Yeah. So then there is like the highlighter there, these are, this is the function you might use for your.
Um no, just. Yeah, under there or even under the marker. We can get someone to do and you love, you can change the thickness and then you can.
Today, you see yellow, the the drop down arrow there.
Oh. Yeah, you can make all those little fun.
Black yellow or any other highlight color you want.
This is exciting.
I know.
Close that arrow and drag it across your information there, as soon as I get it on there.
That's satisfying.
Turn on.
And that's always fast to you, right?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if I'm mature enough to do this.
This is fun.
This is fun.
There's a little bit of a learning curve when trying to learn to use a stylus, so.
Okay, so there's just one other thing I'd like to show you that you might use today in Word. So if you look at the bottom of your screen to the right hand side, next to the date and time, there's a little keyboard there. If you don't have it, I can show you how to get it to populate.
Next to the date and time.
On the right hand side at the bottom of the screen.
I don't have it.
I don't have that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I see.
So if you don't have it, this button here on your stylus is uh click, so you're gonna click your stylus and in the center bar down there, where there is no, where there is no tabs saved, you know, like no pens, click in that area and a menu will pop up.
It doesn't show it there.
You should uh just the white forward screen up here.
Okay.
You have to.
How do I go back to that?
I'm sharing the whole thing.
Oh, yeah, look at that.
Okay, I got it, I got it, do you guys, do you have it? Okay.
Then we add the keyboard.
Good click.
It's gonna be your own thing.
Oh, yep, I just figured out how to turn it on. Okay. So go down to here.
Oh, I see, I think I'm I'm.
Right.
It's. Okay, what?
Uh.
Touch keyboard.
It was.
Uh on your stylus view, just on button.
Right there. Perfect, okay, right in there and then. Yeah, right in right click with your stylus on it, and you get that same.
Yep, perfect, I'll show you.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So we go down here, we right click right here and we go.
Oh, now we can see it.
Touch keyboard button.
Okay, so you see, you can see it.
What is that? Did you figure it out? What is that? Okay, so go down here, we'll just zoom and the the weather, that clean area right there, that's where you would just click.
In the section between zoom and the the weather, that clean area right there, that's where you would just click.
Show touch keyboard.
Yep. So just, yeah.
Oh, that was, is that's where you.
You you click your stylus and you touch it to that section.
And that, that new right there will show up, there you go.
I I did it once and something come up.
And one down. And now the bottom of your screen.
In one of the options there, it shows uh show keyboard button, you can select that.
Oh, yeah. Got it, push that and then.
It is one, two, three, four, five, six.
You need to click this and then click it.
Yeah, show touch keyboard button, select that and now you should see the keyboard at the bottom right hand side, that's where you.
And then touch right there.
Mm-hmm.
She's talking, doing, but she's talking, okay, okay.
Just because you don't have the actual.
And then.
Just make the tool.
Shows.
Yes.
With you or.
Yep, so now you can click your keyboard, you'll see a little screen like that pop up.
And you need to use the keyboard on the screen and then you have the keyboard.
Oh, okay.
And you can write in with your stylus hello or any anything you'd like.
Wait, how did you get that little screen?
Here, I'll show you.
So now you have options and you can switch between your keyboards and this is a write-in keyboard and then.
Don't tell her what I'm doing, she'll cry.
Right.
Once you click the X.
The downside of that is if you're in a Word document or an Excel document and you start typing, you're actually making changes to the document.
You're making.
You're not just adding the, like you're the.
Oh, yes.
So you might want to use a different color, something that you remember that you wrote it, highlighted afterwards, that this is something you added to the document.
Yeah. You're all.
Yeah, so you need to file, save as in your own folders if you're gonna make.
Yeah. Why, it's a leave range until we find better software.
Yes. Right, yeah, that makes sense. So I'm thinking what I'll do is probably bookmark that folder for Ty on his desktop and then that way it's just easy to sort of save to that and not having to go through the steps. There it is, okay, so you have to have your cursor somewhere in the screen.
I might try and take all the budget documents and save them as a separate model in your folders so that you're already ready to go, you can just pull up your folder, open your document, start writing in your.
You'll accidentally open the wrong file. That's good, that's good.
I understand, but I'm saying all these.
And I think I'll label them all as V I dash, the name of the document.
You love it, right, like a Word document, but like an Excel document or P I.
So that it's really clear if it says its name in a document or P I.
So I'm gonna start on.
Yeah, and you can highlight like.
Option, so Excel, okay, we're gonna navigate to the file folder again, so at the bottom of the screen, the file folder.
Nope.
Yeah, you'll have. Or or, but you can do the same thing.
I'm gonna say that.
I'm gonna say that's where you put highlights in.
I'm less. Oh.
Yeah, I I can be the enforcer, instructions.
So, okay, we're going back to the folder.
Okay.
Yes, the file folder at the bottom of the screen to the left hand side. We're gonna navigate back to where we're looking at the training information, so we're gonna go back to the K drive, so that's how we go to this PC. On the left hand side of the screen. We're gonna go to the commissioners' K drive, double click that. We're gonna go to twenty twenty three budget development, which is the second folder, double click that. You will see digital instructions, it is a folder in there, we'll click that, double click, and we're gonna pull up the Excel exercise, so double click that. So somebody's already in there.
It is not for editing for.
It's an exercise, so that's okay, just read only is fine.
Okay. Sarah. It's gonna open first, I guess.
Again, you know, your screen is touchscreen, so when you have Excel documents, especially the ones that we'll be seeing um in the coming time that they may be long, it may go a lot vertically and horizontally very long, so you can scroll in and out of your Excel document by using your hand. So you would kind of pinch and expand or you would move it this way, so you can see all the rows. You're not limited now to a pay, a size of a piece of paper. So you can make this bigger or smaller by expanding your fingers in and out or scrolling to the right or left, up and down, see the data however you need to see it. I just wanna say one caveat, Excel, um every cell has information in it, there could be cells that have formulas in it that were used by the budget team to develop it. So if you change something in one of those cells, you may disrupt other things going on in the cell. So for sure, save your version in your folder, cause if you ever disrupt it, you can go back and get the original one and know what changed.
Did they just, would you just give us a read only option?
Well, we we so we're we're looking at ways to protect the cells, we're, and you're about to see how to do this in a PDF
We gave you.
as well. where you couldn't change anything.
Because that that's bound to happen, if the option is there to change it.
So. So. We don't. I know that there's high risk with this, but this is why it's a bridge and not the final solution.
And Jennifer then just learned right before and how to lock the cell, so it may not be an option, but I did wanna make you know, something I might have.
This one is not locked, but all of the live documents are locked, so I'm not sure how, cause I was telling Ty that we could um edit, like you can make markings, but I'm not sure how that's gonna work with the locked, so you might not be able to highlight a locked cell, we might have to work around that. But we didn't want you to accidentally delete things, cause I did it myself.
Delete.
So what I'm suggesting if you wanna.
No, you could change the.
Pre.
Yeah.
Model.
Can we all just have our own digital copies?
Yes.
So and that's where we're gonna show you how to save.
How to copy and save your information into your old folder.
Okay.
When you open this, then you're gonna save your thing, that's why everybody's got your own folder.
I'll do that for you. So when you're using Excel, I would suggest not using the keyboard, just using your stylus, so when you use your stylus, you're writing over the document, when you use the keyboard, you're typing in the document. So don't do, I would suggest just not using the touch keyboard, so that this way nothing does get funky on you. That's all I wanted to show in Excel, unless you wanted to actually type in it.
Can we highlight with Excel like some of the cells and will it show? I mean, if we have our own document in Word.
Yeah.
If it's unlocked, you definitely can, we didn't have a chance to see what it would do if we lock cells and if you could do a highlight over a locked cell. So I I can I can try that really quick.
Right now, you have the functionality to do that, the same way you would pick draw um and select the thickness, the color that you wanted to highlight at the top here. And you could highlight something. And this document, however, is not locked, so she's gonna check a lot of mine.
So I highlighted that and then I just, so why wouldn't, why wouldn't you confuse as a, why wouldn't you or our assistants just
Now it's not working.
take all this and put it in our in our folders right off the gate and then we just go into that, so that we're not messing with everybody's.
That's what I'm gonna do and that's what.
That's a great question, so we did go back and forth with how we should handle it and um what we found is if it was in one central location, everyone is assured that they're getting the same documents that somewhat, something's not different in someone else's folder, this way everyone's saving it from one central location as if we were to email it to everyone and then you can save it, we can do that exercise.
But if all, if all we're doing though, I mean, if we all kind of agree, all we're doing is highlighting, adding notes, I mean, no one's gonna change numbers or anything
Right.
there shouldn't be a risk of us seeing different document.
So so the the risk, if you recall, uh we used to have you leave your binders every night.
Yeah.
Oh, and the budget team would go in and change pages.
Uh-huh, oh, I see, so when you have to make adjustments, you need to make it in one place.
Um. So. Yeah, we're, we need to be, wanna make it to one central place and not have to go into each new folder.
Because you're making it be your changes.
I got you, okay, if that makes sense.
So we'll move from Excel and go to the PDF version, so if you go to the right hand corner of your Excel document that you have open and click X and don't save. You should go back to your file folder that's open and there is a PDF exercise. Um so that's K drive, twenty twenty three budget development. PDF exercise.
I'm just not, it's, I just have to get used to this. I usually use my finger on the surface.
And you can still use your finger to double click things.
I mean, that's, I just find it to be a little more like, this thing is like really sensitive and every, sometimes it's, you know, whoa, I didn't mean to do that, you know, with my finger, it's a little more, feels like a little more.
A little more control for you.
Yeah, a little more control.
Yep.
And certain things work a lot better with your finger than the stylus. Um like, you know, obviously two finger motions when you have to look at a map or something, bigger and smaller, yeah, stuff like that work better with your fingers. Okay.
Is that what it's supposed to be?
Yep.
Okay, so does everyone have the PDF open?
Yep.
Yep.
So at the top of your PDF, you'll see where it says home, tools, and then it has the actual name of the PDF file that we have open, if you select tools. There is comment, if you make sure that is open, so there's a dropdown there, make sure it selects open.
Do you have to touch anything now?
Yeah, so use your stylus and or your finger, select the dropdown that says open and your comment should open.
It already says open, then we're good.
Yeah, so, yep, just select open. And then your screen should pop back up and look like what's on the screen up here, there's a comment section on the right hand side, your documents on the left hand side.
I missed an instruction, Nicole, I'm sorry.
No worries, so go back to at the top where it says tools.
No, there's a red, red bar.
And comments.
That's that's.
Like open, shut it, yep, okay, great, thank you. And then right on your screen, okay.
So now there is um a row at the top of your screen, so it is the third row down, it starts with the word comment and then it has like a little comment picture.
There you go.
If you go all the way down, there's a pencil, it's right next to the box with a T in it, if you select that. And then you keep scrolling all the way to the right, you'll see a red, a red circle or a circle there with thickness, this is where you can change your color when you're writing. So if you were to select that red circle, you can change your color. If you do the lines next to it, you can change your thickness. And these are options along that side there to change what it is that you're going to write, so now you can write in your PDF, so you can just write whatever you'd like.
Now you can't erase though.
So if you want to erase, it's the function right next to the pencil, it looks like a old school pen eraser.
There's another way to.
Yeah.
And you can erase what it is that you you've written. And you can erase what it is that you've written.
With the eraser on the stylus.
Uh on the the tip still of your pencil.
The tip. Yep, you have to use the tip because it's a dot.
So the functionality is a little bit limited here, so you have to use that eraser button and erase.
Oh, doesn't sound good.
Yeah, so the PDFs are a little clunky, which is why we're showing you word and Excel and it will.
Red and white.
The upside of the PDFs is you can't change anything that we've given you.
It's not as easy to change. But if you go to comment, you can delete the whatever action you do.
True.
Yeah.
Should you go to comment?
So like over here, like whatever.
Oh, over here.
Yeah. Yeah, and if you do the little three lines up there.
It's gone, but okay.
You can delete it.
Okay, and then, okay, there's there, now I wonder.
So every comment you make will go on the right hand side there.
This is this is the thing that we.
If you use the pencil to write a comment. It'll show up on the right hand side. However, you will not be able to see what was actually typed, what you actually hand wrote. The computer doesn't, this software doesn't know how to make your words, if I make a real word.
This is strictly in English.
You can change it.
Okay, so I can write Russian if I want.
You could, you're good. Do you know how to write in Russian?
I would like to run up those.
That would be a surprise.
Where's the um.
I think we're using, I think we're using comment and not.
Are you thinking that way?
It's stupid, what's on the other?
So another function besides just the draw is the first, it looks like a quotient box, uh it's, I think, can you see that I'm selecting it this way, here's a quotient, you can select that. And say you wanted to make a note by the end of budget here, you can click it in there.
Wait, what?
So at the top ribbon, there is like a quotient at the top right there, um right next to comment and a little highlighter.
That's sticky, no, oh, you do have.
Or.
It's. Mine's right, which is that.
Yeah, you just.
And now you can type your comment, like whatever it is that you wanted to say.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Yours is round and mine's square, I'm not sure why. I found this to be, that's what I've been using, and I found it to be a little easier than this um. This writing with stylus seems kind of like, it's not. It basically, what you get is you, it's it's like putting a post-it on your on your own document, so you click that.
You're typing, yeah.
And it gives you this little box and then, let me get rid of that one.
You can use your stylus to write again once that quotient box pops up.
So I can write a note, like um, you know, reduce. Bad deal. This program.
Bad deal.
Why are these workers, no, whatever, post. And then it's when it shows there, so like then, like that's basically like a post-it. And to to read it, you click it and then it it shows up and.
So you can use your stylus to write inside of that sticky note that you're calling, you can, instead of using your keyboard, you can still write and it will make it text.
How does she get the others up?
So if I click that, sticky note again at the top, right, the quotient. And I make a a dot there, right? I put it right over the B. I'm gonna go over here to my box and I'm gonna write happy with my stylus.
How'd you get the box?
It changed it into text for me, yeah.
It did it to text, mm.
And then post it. So you can still use your stylus to write, you don't necessarily have to use your keyboard, but you can have that functionality on the right hand side where it is.
Like if you if you wanted to write a kind of a substantial note, like a paragraph, you know, the stylus is not gonna, that's you can't gonna have the room and the and the precision to do that. So you can use this function and you can write as long as of a note as you want, if you're self. If you just wanna write like a word, then the stylus is pretty good, but if you wanna write a paragraph.
Write a paragraph or something on a certain part of what you're looking at, just to remind you of something.
Then these these sticky notes, I think, are critical. Probably can interrupt some breaks.
Highlight is nice, though.
Pretty, pretty well.
That's what I like to do, it's hi- just highlighting.
And now, can we do a highlight?
Yeah, comment, you guys have.
Yeah, that's what I have a word to.
And only you can.
Okay.
I have a.
It was true.
Your color selection. Right there.
Yeah.
Color selection is, is it that same circle?
Like.
Over here?
Yes.
So I wanna go with a pink, let's say, okay. And then, and then I I drag drag it and then, that's it?
Yeah.
It's still got that blue box around it, is that bad?
Just select away from it and it will go away.
What does that mean, select away from it?
Um put your cursor, your stylus away from the box.
But I I.
And get the screen that should go away.
Oh, yeah, but.
Do you have a pink highlight? Yes.
Okay, that's pretty good.
Yeah, and we'd love to know that.
That's pretty easy, highlight.
So and now now we're, that's all the three, how to save is the next function, so at the top, write, close this document at the X on your screen.
That's how to save.
Because we need.
No, do not save. One.
Why, what if they wanted to save what they had just done?
So the exercise I was gonna use is actually saving the actual documents that we're gonna use in the next section.
Okay.
So right now, when I hit the close, like you said.
Yeah.
I got a screen that said, do you wanna close all tabs or current tab?
So that's referring to any tab that you have open in your PDF, so if you have multiple tabs, say you had.
You're telling me to try to just close all tabs?
You can close all tabs.
Hey, I gotta tell you something, Robin, you're still. Do I wanna save changes, can you say no? When you look.
At this junction, no.
You look at the instructions. But if I wanted to, I could.
You wanted to, you could say, save that.
Okay, and I know nothing and.
Nope, I am trusting the process, I am. So let's be ready to save our budget documents that we're gonna talk about today in our own personal files. See how this goes.
Okay.
So we're gonna navigate back to the K drive, twenty twenty three Budget Development folder.
Wait, my Dovi's not working, so it's closing.
Oh boy, is that gonna happen off and on that will be held up on, oh, this isn't turned on, that is all of this, what about um, what about the.
Okay, Nicole, we are going into the K drive and opening what, I'm so sorry.
Folks from Open Public Meeting.
Twenty three Budget Development.
Okey doke.
Somebody saying, hey, did you send the chair a note on this, I wanna see your computer.
So are we all disposable? Yeah.
It is all retrievable, yeah.
So is that gonna be another level of aggravation?
Your notes are already.
Yes, they're already, they're already extracting them anyway.
That's like I don't make many notes.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, there you go, you you still won't take everything.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, no, probably not.
Yeah, that's okay, but but this is why when when you save your stuff, it's saved on a shared drive, which is searchable. When we get asked for information, we're hanging on.
Can can the chair search my stuff, and I don't care what she sees, all I'm saying is.
She can, but is she really gonna have time?
Well, no, the reality is that any two of us become a quorum and we're not supposed to be communicating outside of our meeting, I'm just wondering how it all fits.
So to the extent that uh you can be a quorum because you cannot be making decisions out of the public eye, right? That's the, that's the whole point of that.
We don't are communicating, I'm told, I don't know.
You you can't communicate because then you're you are kind of making decisions as you go.
And having a meeting.
That's and that's the the key to the whole thing, um so however, if you made notes today or saved a file today. One of your seatmates could go in today and find that stuff and that is not considered a violation of the Open Public Media Act. So you don't want to be writing a note and.
Unless I type, hey, Carrie, make sure that you.
Yeah, and and then say, look in my folder, yeah, you you can't be doing that. But uh but you you won't, um and I I would uh. I would suggest to you that you do not have time to go digging around in someone else's folder.
Oh, I wouldn't know how to turn it on, I don't, I'm just bringing it up as an issue of somebody gonna cause us grief.
Right. I don't think it is an issue because today you could do that very same thing, we're not creating a a new thing that you can't already do.
Okay.
I just, I mean, this is awesome to know how to do these tools, but I mean, just in case people are like kind of intimidated, it's like I. I'm just happy to be able to see them and I mean, I probably will just use my notebook to write notes, you know, I didn't really do much writing in the binder to begin with. I mean, here and there, I might have put a like a flat.
That's that's me too, same thing.
But if you're like freaked out, you know, like.
I have so many notes.
Just to be able to see the documents and not have the binder is like, that's ninety percent of what I'm excited about. If I can get, if I can get a facility with all these little highlights and stuff, but I'm good with just a notebook and then the binder in electronic form.
That's cool.
And I've got a notebook and I just throw a piece of paper.
My binder was color coded and I had everyone's.
Buttered. Well, I'm just saying, like, there is like, there's everyone's like a huge.
You can add like that, I take my notes on the documents that I receive.
I think you'll find great benefit. Well, I think too. I watch you guys, it looks like. Even if you're writing all your stuff on paper, you know. Yeah, I'm just making in scratch here and there.
Okay. So now we're gonna save the documents for today in your own personal file.
Okay.
So we're in the K drive, twenty twenty three Budget Development. Once we get there, we're looking for the file that says twenty twenty three Midterm Preliminary Bu- Budget Work Session. If you're using your stylus or using a keyboard, you have to click click it, the right click, so that you get a drop down menu where you're gonna select copy. So you're copying your phone, your the entire folder and you're gonna save as in your particular folder.
On the. Ah. Yep.
Save as.
Yeah, so copy.
To the whole twenty three nitro. Oh, go to copy first.
Your whole files. Yep, mhm, copy.
Sort of copying and pasting.
The whole folder.
Oh, copy and paste is all you.
Yeah, okay, just checking.
Yep, copy the entire folder.
And then.
So from the section where it says twenty twenty three midterm, you'll select that, click copy, go into your folder and paste it.
Okay, you already did it, Sarah.
Yep.
She was.
I know, she was like on it.
And we're naming the folders with your name at the front too, so it's really clear.
Cause the files.
So if we open that file now, we'll see at the very top, there is a fi- a PDF labeled zero zero underscore twenty 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 three Midterm Budget Preliminary Work Session. That is condensed version of all the documents that are presented here today in PDF. So you can open that file and you'll have everything that we're gonna discuss today.
Which one?
So it is zero zero twenty twenty three midterm preliminary work session, it should be the very first one. It's labeled zero zero, so it rises to the top there, no matter whatever else is saved in there. And those are all your documents that are talking today.
Nice.
In PDF. So if you wanted to have something in Excel or you wanted to look at one of the documents that was originated in Word. Below that are those documents that are all combined in the top one, but if it was an Excel workbook, it is now also available to you in Excel.
So wait, so so number one, two, three, four, five, seven, eight, nine are all part of zero zero?
Yes, they are.
Just broken into chunks?
Yes.
And that's gonna be how things are gonna go as we go along?
So let me give an example for one of the spreadsheets that you'll see in zero zero, there is an Excel workbook that is on an eight and a half by fourteen, a legal sized piece of paper. It is now condensed to your small screen, it may be very difficult for you to read all those small numbers. If you'd like to see in Excel, you can open that same file name and be able to locate it and now it's in Excel, so you'll have a better visual.
Oh, but it's it's also in the first document as well, just in its condensed way.
Yes, it is, yeah. Yes.
Yep.
And it's PDF format.
But we can still expand it.
You can still expand that, you sure can.
You can.
So it's only if we really need, like only once in a while, we might wanna access one of the break broken out.
If you want.
Yes.
So then each morning, if you're gonna like tell it, show us where, like, is it, is it like.
Here's where the files are for today, that is the plan.
Okay, and then if I make notes on them, then I save them into my own.
Yep. Yeah, so now it's located in your own, your personal folder, so every time you make a comment on it, you will be able to just save, cause it will be in your personal.
Oh, this, yeah, cause we did that.
As you did it first. So it's on the.
They're saving your own versions.
Yep, so everyone has their own version now, every time you make a change, you just save it, cause it's in your folder.
Okay.
Then every day, every new day, you'll say to them, okay, today we're gonna open up this next set of folders from the main main file and then.
Copy and paste.
Instead of turn it to the green tab reminder, well, this construction and.
Right, it's gonna turn it to this, it's gonna be.
Yep.
Excellent.
Great.
That's.
Those would be nice.
We'll see how it goes.
So you're still gonna provide the paper documents for Gary?
We are still going to have paper, just in case.
Well, he needs, that's what, you know, he's not gonna be using this, so we just wanna make sure that he's gonna be accommodating as well.
Yes, yes. I'm absolutely going to, yes.
Okay, and also all of these are still gonna be posted online for the public.
I'll let you borrow it.
Yes.
Yeah, they're all gonna be out there, just like they always have been.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So that's all for the instruction today, do you have any other questions?
I do have a question.
Thank you for putting up with us.
I guess, were you a kindergarten cheat teacher or something at some point, way back when?
No, but she has many children.
You do have a certain map of tolerance and explanation. Well, you do.
I appreciate it.
And we appreciate, and we appreciate.
Yeah, you really do, and everybody doesn't have that.
I don't get ruffled chicken.
Good job.
That's great.
That's easy how it works.
So you're gonna be watching my first hour of this budget session, it's gonna be riveting.
Okay.
That's easy, that's.
I know.
Then just tell me, just if this what I take about it.
All right, so we're gonna take a short break now and then we're gonna come back and dive into the numbers.
Yeah, okay. And then you want me to scale, you know, for any of the budget conversation.
Is there gonna be some.
So we are now going to launch into the part of conversation that you're much more familiar with, where we're looking at actual numbers, and you can follow along as you see see fit. Uh, so first document we're gonna look at, and I'm gonna share my screen. Is that, oh, I've gotta log in, so I can share my screen. My apologies. Uh, that will take just a moment. I swear that too. We are going to begin by looking at where we're at with twenty twenty two. So the first document that you'll open is, Nicole, could you give us the file name for that?
Yes, it is the twenty twenty two general fund financial status report. So if you opened up the combined version of the PDF, it is the number one, the first page.
Harold, could you let me into the.
Nicole, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I love that one.
Yes, that's right there.
Show nice, yeah. Sound is off now, just to stop that weird echo. And sharing my screen, where is the screen I wanna share? Okay. So here's the status for where we are as of August of twenty twenty two. The beginning fund balance, uh, is. It doesn't look right. So I'm I'm I will start before I go into these numbers, going to say that, um, yeah, that is why are these numbers not right? Uh, the fund balance is incorrect. Um, so so my apologies. As you heard me say yesterday, we've had this budget all of three weeks and we've been scrubbing like crazy and numbers are still changing. So I I know that this fund balance is inaccurate.
Are you talking about the twenty ninth, twenty nine million?
I am twenty twenty nine two forty six. That number is much too low. When we look at the worksheet in the model, you will see that it is significantly more than that. So, um, looking just then at the revenue estimates, which are correct. You'll see the total revenue in the revised budget was estimated at a hundred and fifteen million, two hundred seventy nine thousand and some change. And our current projections are a hundred and fourteen million, one hundred forty two thousand roughly. So our revenues are anticipated to be down by about a little over a million dollars. And this is where the differences are. Our taxes are coming in at about ninety nine percent of the levy that we included in the budget, and that's normal. And commissioners may recall, we're gonna talk a lot more about the levy later this morning.
Is that the four hundred thousand dollar generally amount we're talking about?
That. Yeah, we're roughly down about four hundred thousand every year, because the state law requires that a county cannot collect a levy higher than in your preliminary budget, which comes out months before the final numbers are ready. So it is a common practice in the state of Washington to set the levy in the budget at more than you expect to collect, so that if for any chance the levy goes up in the final calculations of the assessor, we have capacity and we're able to collect everything. Otherwise, they would have to reduce the levy to the amount in our preliminary budget. So we always collect roughly ninety nine percent of what's in the budget. So property tax is coming in right where we thought it would.
So the ending fund balance that I have on this sheet is thirty nine million fifty thousand, is that correct?
That, that is, yeah, that is correct. So so it is much, I may have just, this may just be off, it'd be thirty nine instead of twenty nine. But that's, that all is accurate in the model that you received. So again, property tax, right where we thought it would be. Sales tax, you see a big drop in what we anticipate in revenue in sales tax. We had budgeted at a ten percent growth, and that is not what we're experiencing at all. Sales tax is on track year to date. Growth is five percent, and we anticipate that it'll continue for the rest of the year, going up and down as it has been over the last few months, and we're gonna come in at five percent. We can shift it this time and look at sales tax, or we can go over the overview, and then we'll get in depth in sales tax.
Would that look any different than what we had yesterday?
Do it that way. Uh, no, it's not gonna look different than what you have.
Okay.
Was sales tax the one where I saw that like it was really flat, but now it's kinda trending up?
Last a long time, and it's it's been on a long term trend.
The old, what the aggregate is five percent.
Yep.
But the last whole month have been strong.
Year to date, yep, five percent. Alright, so that's sales tax, and we'll look closer at sales tax after we get through this slide. Other taxes are a little bit up. And where we see the the increase is we had budgeted conservatively in other taxes. So one of the reasons is that the collections from the city of Olympia are a little more than what we anticipated. And the other thing is that other taxes is where we record the sale of tax titled property. So when our treasurer arranges to sell those little pieces of land for a few thousand dollars, that adds up. And we have about fifty thousand dollars in tax titled property sales that are included in other taxes. We don't budget for that, that's a windfall. So, but the hundred and thirty three thousand, that includes roughly fifty thousand for tax titled property sales. It's a very good thing.
Do you have the number handy regarding timber?
We can get the timber numbers for you. That that's not included in the taxes. But we will get timber numbers in that.
Which category is that going?
That is in the intergovernmental services is the money for timber, and it is up above budget by about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So when we look at the intergovernor, intergovernmental payments line, that three hundred and ninety two thousand, about three hundred and fifty of that is timber sales above what we never projected.
And when you say timber sales, is that mostly generated through DNR managed properties or or individual?
All of our timber sales are managed by DNR.
Well, but don't we get something from individuals that own their. Well, but don't we get something from individuals that own their own little logging farm or whatever and they buy a permit and pay so much to the county and all that, isn't that all part of it?
I, you know, I don't know where those revenues would go, the, the timber money, the three types of timber revenue that we track is what comes in from the state.
So I wonder if they get, you know, it goes to DNR and then DNR comes in as?
DNR distributing, any type of, any type of logging activities is managed by DNR.
Maybe that's possible. I don't know.
What I thought, but we can look, we can look into that.
But there is, but I bet they have them as well.
There may be a very small amount of money that I tend to not pay attention to anything where the red total revenue is under 100,000. So there might be some little pot somewhere that's accumulating those types of...
And the, and that line item is also included, pilt.
The, the pilt is, I'll have to look at where we book our thousand dollars of pilt.
Thousand dollars.
Yeah, it, it's all of 1,100 dollars, it's just not that much of money. Um, so...
You just said three types of timber revenue.
There, yes, there's the, um, oh boy, now you're, you're testing me 'cause I haven't looked at this recently. There is the timber excise tax, there's the timber revenue sharing on state-owned lands that are sold within our county boundaries and then there's the county lands that are managed by DNR and the, the sale revenue from that timber. So I think those are the three.
There's just different ways to account for the same activity, which is cutting the trees in Capitol State House.
Absolutely correct.
Yeah.
Alright, so, so back up to fines and forfeits, that is down and a big chunk of where we're under is in district court. Collections for DUIs are down by about $200,000.
Great.
Miss Safer Roads?
I don't know.
Is it?
Less apprehensions. I don't know if we got safer roads, we have less apprehension.
But why?
Less law enforcement out there, new, new rules, the legislature.
About stopping drunk drivers?
About, yeah.
You can't pursue.
Officers that are less likely to take any type of aggressive action.
I can tell you from as a DUI practitioner, the number of DUI stops that result in somebody taking off in a chase is like point zero zero one percent.
No, 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 this is all new with the new law since, since your day, you can't, can't pursue.
I'm just saying, not being able to pursue doesn't stop DUI stops.
Okay, let's not get into the DUI formal. My question is in regards to, I know we have LFO Day, the Legal Financial, is that maybe a possibility on why our DUI collections are lower or is it just because there's been fewer arrests for DUIs or is it?
I, I think that that is a great question for District Court that we can follow up on.
Okay.
So are you thinking how this is a result?
Yeah, definitely, is, is the result of lower cases or is the result of lack of collection of?
That, that is what we'll need to ask Frankie about. Yep, so we'll follow up on that. What I can tell you in this moment is it's about 200,000 less than what they budgeted
Okay.
and it could be that they just budgeted too high.
Well, District Court also has a backlog too, is that maybe cases that haven't been processed?
Could be a lot of things, so we'll look into that.
So a lot of possibilities in two.
Yep.
The bottom line, I mean, you're going into all these sub, small subcategories, but it seems to me like we're down a million and sales tax is down a million, so that's pretty much the answer.
Yeah, the resident bounces around a little, but I mean, some of this is, is good to know. In licenses and permits, franchise fees are up. They're up higher, we thought we'd collect about 1.7 million in franchise fees, we're gonna collect 2 million, that accounts for pretty much the whole thing right there.
How about passports, I'm not sure.
And so we're gonna adjust up. Passports, I am so happy that you asked about that because that is in charges for services and you may recall a long conversation with Mary in the original budget where they were increasing the anticipated revenue for passports to support the new staff that they were asking for. And passport collections are down by 150,000 dollars. So that, that increase is not materialized. Also in charges for services, there is about less in of about 150,000 for law enforcement services. That is money that, that is generally collected when officers do things like work, like the schools and, and other arrangements where our officers go out and we collect a fee for the services. And then in miscellaneous, the big up there is investment interest. Our treasurer has been quite successful in investments and we've collected about 570,000 in interest above where we thought we'd be. So things, things do bounce, the rest of it's bouncing up and down, it balances out, but the big driver is the drop in sales tax. My question is about revenue.
I just, and, and, and you mentioned that with just the, with the public's perspective, the drop in sales tax is based on the projection that we had when we developed budget of 10%.
Right, it's under forecast.
Yes, under forecast because the, the, still a 5% increase in sales tax is pretty robust.
It is for Thurston County, yes.
I, I wonder, we emphasize what you stated earlier, just to make sure that that resonates with you.
Great, and we're gonna look a little more detail for sales tax in just a few minutes here. Page two of this document is expenditures and you see just at a glance on this page that our offices and departments compared to the budget as adopted by the board for the First Amendment are expecting to turn in about eight and a half million dollars. And that is a lot and you'll see what I mean by that when we look at the forecast model.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
With the expenditure, is that like, are, when departments turn this in, is it just an estimate on where they're going to be at, at the end of the year or is it kind of like this is what we've spent so far?
No, this is an estimate to the end of the year.
Okay.
We receive as part of our monitoring practices, if you will. We get a financial plan from every office and department at the end of every quarter. So this is based on their second quarter financial plan where every office looks at expenditures to date, actual expenditures to date. So they know what the first half of the year's spending looked like and then they make their best estimates on how much am I really gonna spend in the last half of the year. So most of our offices and departments do a really good job of that and your budget team works with offices and departments, especially some of the bigger ones, to review. So for example, when, I, I don't have to do this anymore, but when Public Defense was struggling with their budget, I sat down with Patrick and Jose every month and said, where are you at? How's it going? What's the projection? Do we have anything to worry about? That budget has become much more stable and Jose now just turns in the quarterly financial plan like everyone else does and you'll see that Public Defense is now estimating that they're gonna revert 886,000. Well, that's a lot, but for someone...
My question is, my next question for this, and thank you for that, Robin, is how many empty positions or open positions do we have in each of these offices and is it, the bulk of majority of those eight millions, are they just savings?
Right. How much of it, how much of it is personnel savings and how much of it is the other miscellaneous things? We can get a breakdown of that for you and have that ready in October.
That would be good to know because I know, like, a big one that I see here first is the Clerk's Office, but I know they've been struggling to fill positions and so I'm guessing a big portion of that is salary savings.
Some of it is, but some of it is also overfunding for blank.
Oh, there's that too. And then, so I, I think it would be good to know, like, the breakdown on, as we've been hearing from different offices and departments that they're hiring to hire is what they're returning, is it just kind of that trend of vacancies?
The vacancies.
Yeah.
So this is just general fund, is that right?
This is only general fund.
And why, are, are we gonna, do we need to dive into the, like, some of the specifics here? Like why is CPED at 24% or blah, blah, are we gonna, is this just kinda giving us a picture, we move on?
This, this is an opportunity for you to ask questions that I might have answers to or definitely that we can get follow-up information on.
So I, I did math and thought it was about 7% and I see in this page that's about right. So is that, what's the, isn't it 3% usually or whatever or three and a half? This is about double.
Three to 5% is what we normally see.
So this is like, almost, can, almost double what we might expect in a normal year?
Yes.
Yeah, I think you have, I have later on your report, the reversion in the last couple of years has been climbing to 3 and a half percent.
Has been.
Yes, it, it's been extreme the last few years.
So this, this new number is just about a, a part of it.
Yeah, well, we've been going through all those explanations and a lot of it's COVID related
Yeah.
in one way or another.
Yeah, and this is not, this, this is exclusive of the lost, any lost revenue calculations.
But if COVID is causing ability, inability, workforce issues, inability to staff and that's, I mean, in the, yeah.
Right. In, in that respect, I would agree with you, yes.
Yeah.
It may, you, you're right, it may be some lingering effects of that continuity, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think that that's true.
As a part.
Yeah.
Commissioner's Office, we're at 17.43. Can I ask about that one?
Yeah, we, uh, we have, how many vacancies? One or two?
So ours is vacancies?
Two vacancies. The bulk of it is vacancy savings. I can, however, gonna do a very...
Just made an, an offer to the Climate Mitigation Project Manager.
Oh, that's exciting.
We'll see.
What about, what about for a response? What about the ag we use on that we funded last fall?
That is still, so, that is still in the works to get filled, so that's what's...
No, I thought they made an offer.
I have not heard, probably, probably.
So I, 'cause I've been, I've been on it, I've been like, have done...
So that's also solid.
They made an offer, who's they?
So CPED, CPED made?
CPED's in charge of?
Yeah, so it's under, because remember the position was going to be working on the docket item for agriculture and so that's why I got placed under that department and so last I heard from Josh is that an offer did get made and hopefully, you know, I, I, hopefully they accepted and hopefully they'll start soon.
Yeah, I, I, I haven't heard you have the names.
So I'm going to, this is a really great opportunity, I think, to show you the monitoring that we do on a regular basis. To where, where can I wash my... And then I'm going to, for some reason I gotta share a different screen.
You need to stop sharing this and ensure another one.
Alright, so, okay, stop, share, share. This is what a financial plan looks like. Romero, can you minimize the, thank you. So you see that this is the Commissioner's Office, is your office and you have a general fund budget. So here's your approved budget in this first column right here and the budget for your office is 3,356,000 roughly, right? And it's allocated into salaries, benefits, supplies, services. If we were going to hire someone and we have funding for 50,000 to implement a diversity plan this year in services for the Commissioner's Office. A little bit of money for our copier machine, that's the debt there is the copy machine. And then we've got 572,000 or 571,000 in interfront costs in our department. So these, this is the spending in the first six months, the parts that's shaded, actual expenditures out the door. And then based on the trends, we say, okay, we think we're gonna spend, especially if Romero's successful in filling the positions, we're gonna spend a little more in salaries. And this is our salary estimate for the rest of the year and benefits and so on. So here's the variance. It's in this column right here. We're anticipating underspending 164,000 for salaries and 82,000 for benefits. That's because of vacancies. But the big savings in our office is this 300,000 and that's because we had in the original budget assumed that we'd be moving into the atrium much sooner than we actually are. And at the atrium, they're not charging us rent until we move in. So we have a lot of rent savings in all of the offices and departments who would have moved into the atrium.
Thank you for that, Robin.
Yes, that is the value of monitoring and our financial plans. And I, I, this is a nice spot for me to say thank you to every office and department that takes the time every quarter to complete these plans. And for a long time, it was hard to get them and they didn't know how they use them, how we use them and now they just saw it in action.
So, yeah, the highest are community planning and economic development as well as human resources at over 20%.
So those are, there's, that, that's not all about the atrium. There are other things going on in those and we're going to get information.
A lot of vacancies, a lot of vacancies on those two.
Yeah, a lot of vacancy savings in some of these areas, but we'll get information. We'll be able to look at each of the financial plans, just like I just did for the Commissioner's Office and get a sense of where those savings are. Okay, so back to sharing this screen. Alright, so again, overall savings, nearly 8.5 billion dollars. That's significantly higher than, but I think vacancy savings is a big piece of it. So any other questions about this before we move on?
Questions?
We wanna take a five minute?
Yeah, let's go ahead and dig my phone in, Robin.
Okay, so we'll reconvene at 11:00, it's a little longer than 11:00.
So that's the end of the, so that's the end of this section of what we were doing.
Yep, unless you have additional questions.
What's our next topic?
About this, we're gonna dive into sales tax and then property tax.
Sales tax. Okay, that sounds good, thank you.
Great. Great.
It is eleven AM, and we are picking up, Robyn, with?
We're picking up with uh looking at a closer, closer dive into sales tax. And trying to get the right thing up on my screen to share.
I just realized on the left, my footprint on the table is pretty one on my spin over.
Um.
Binder, the, the, does have the perks of the chair.
It's right in the middle.
And we all had three binders spread out, and it's this kind of like.
Oh, there we go. Zoom, you'd think after two years, I'd know exactly what to, where to find all the buttons. Um, but here we go, sales tax. So, um, this is the long-term trend going all the way back to two thousand and seven, where the county, uh, the first graph I have on the screen here is the year-over-year trend. Um, the county coming in super strong in the months leading up to the Great Recession, and then that's what you see. A solid year or more than a year of of negative growth, which is extremely unusual.
Um, what happened to April twenty-two?
April twenty-two, eh, and then you see a couple more months in twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
Were flat, totally flat. Um, with point zero growth year-over-year, it was just super low. Um, and that is, you see, once you hit twenty twenty-two, it starts bouncing around. Now, we, in twenty-one, we had crazy high growth, and we knew that. And we knew that it was just totally outside of the norm, because we were comparing it to the big negative growth in the months of the COVID year, when things were closed down. Um, so, but it went way down in twenty twenty, and then it popped right back up, like there'd been no recession. Then we saw crazy high growth, and now it's, it's dropping. And there's, I think that we heard the, um, our state economists say that people are going back to buying services other than durable goods. A large part of the growth we saw were people trying to find ways to entertain themselves. Um, you saw yesterday, uh, that the growth rates that we've seen are in things like toys, books, and music, um, uh, and sporting goods. Uh, those are the sectors that are really strong right now in retail, as well as gas and convenience stores. Um, and the rest of the retail sector is going down. And that's the breakdown that you see on page two is retail trade accounts for about forty-two percent. Um, and it is slightly down, you know, it's to a point where it's pretty much flat. So construction, growth in construction is strong. Uh, accommodation and food services is up, not the same way it's, it is in the state, but it is up a little. Uh, and then you see the rest of the sectors. But uh, once you get below trade and construction, those are our two strongest, or or those are the two sectors where Thurston County collects the most sales tax. Um, if you look at the graph, everything else is so small that you really can't um see a, a trend. The, the dominant line is retail trade, and then the second one is construction. So when retail trade goes down, so goes the county as a whole. Back to what Romero was saying earlier, though. Five percent growth, when, when you look at the bottom chart on the graph, it was super flat for many years, and then it started a consistent upward growth trend. Um, and on average, little more, a little less, but on average, we collect about five percent per year. That is a normal collection pattern for us. So we experienced extreme growth in the last two years, but we appear to be going back to a normal pattern. Now, does that um precede an economic downturn where we're gonna start seeing some of this negative growth, or there're gonna be more of these super-low months? I, I don't know. And you've heard the economists, I'm not an economist, so I pay attention to what they're saying. And what we saw in the statewide forecast is that um, the story is a mixed bag. The, the um, three groups that our State Department of Economic and Revenue Forecast Council follows are all saying that there's about a fifty-fifty chance of a recession in the next two years. So none of them are saying, yes, within the next two years, we are going to experience. They're all saying, I, it's almost a flip of the coin. So what you see, what you will see when we look at the forecast model is I continue to assume five percent growth in sales tax over the long run.
I know your estimates are conservative as a whole. But as we're seeing it, I mean, it, even that is, would it be wiser to go even a little bit lower than five percent?
We definitely could do that. And so when we start looking at the model and having the pieces move around, and that's a really great thing that we can do on Monday, is if you set your sales tax even lower, and by the way, that would make Nicole more comfortable. She likes to be a little more conservative than I. Um, is, if, if you did that, um, then how much less are you gonna be able to cover of the, the needs of the count?
Cause they, they, they got, you can see there is a gap, so they, more conservative, they, the board wants to go, they, they have to slide.
And. You, you do wanna be conservative, but you don't wanna be so conservative that you, you suddenly can't
Yeah.
afford to, to, you start cutting into things that you need. So we'll take a look at that when we're looking at the model on Monday.
How does that approach apply to the reversion? Like, we've had this unusually high reversion, are we gonna continue to, like, what are you doing in terms of forecasting that?
So I have forecasted the reversion that we're going to go back to a three percent. That also is uh very conservative. That offices and departments are going to start to spend the money they have. But one thing that we can look at, and one thing that we should look at, maybe not in the midterm, but absolutely when we go into the biennial build next year, we should look at, are any of these po- uh offices and departments simply overfunded? And I would suggest to you that they are.
That was, I'm sure that was not a very popular comment.
It is, it is, our offices and departments are going to be extremely unhappy to hear that. But, but I think it's a thing that you absolutely should be doing. So when we look at the historical trends, let's talk a little more about that.
But I think it's a combination, and I think the question that you asked comes from here, is, you know, the. Is, you know, the the reversion is salary savings because it's the the difficult to find a position. So, I think it has to be all that part of the larger conversation.
Right, and and one example that we just saw play out when we looked at the financial plan for the Commissioner Office. A chunk of those savings this year are because we're not paying rent yet in the atrium. Uh, next year, we will have moved into the atrium, so the entire budget for the atrium will be spent. That that's gonna, that's not gonna translate to next year.
I think the same thing's true with the with this, like, you know, it's not like.
Eventually, we're gonna fill our positions.
Right, and they're needed, I mean sheriff's offices, an example, like, nobody's saying we don't need the positions that that are there. So, as soon as they can get filled, they will be spending that money on those employees that we need.
That's right.
It's just kind of this little weird situation we're in where it's hard to recruit people and hire people right now.
And I am in no way suggesting that we should cut budgets or cut positions. Because I think that, um, every one of our offices and departments could use a few more people. Um, to get the work done in a a more expedited manner. But, um, at the same time, I think that when you look at individual budgets. Not this year, but in some years, we've overestimated what they really need for medical benefits, so let's ratchet that back. Maybe there's a remnant of some, um, uh, special services contract. Like, we've got that fifty million built in for a diversity plan. And somewhat fifty thousand, yes, not fifty million, fifty thousand. To keep me honest. But we've got that money built in, uh, maybe someone's got something like that built in that we forgot to back out. So, they got too much money sitting in professional services. It's those kinds of looks. It's not going full-blown zero-based budgeting, which was extremely labor-intensive and very unpopular. But, um, with it is taking a look at, do they have what they really need? Or do they have excess that we can pull out?
Well, I mean, I I see what you're saying, but it's also like when they, when the departments and offices revert a high amount of money, like, that builds trust with me. Like, they're, you know, like, that's a that's a situation where they spent what they needed. They didn't need it that year for whatever reason, comes back. It, I mean, it it hurts, it damages your ability to like forecast and make those projections. But ultimately, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't detriment the county because we get the money back.
It does detriment the county. It detriments the county because you're sitting on money that you could be using to provide services to citizens. You're not doing something that we could be doing because people are sitting on money that they don't need.
If you think.
You want a buffer of around three, three percent? That's a a decent reversion rate. If we were sitting at three percent, that'd be great. But at at any five to eight percent, it's.
I think we're talking about the same thing, I mean, you're just saying you have to look for things that are long-term not needed, so to speak. Versus shifting out things that are just a short-term.
Right.
You know, anomaly.
Right, that's.
So, that's the analysis, and yeah, I mean, if if it can be shown that this is not needed over the long term, then we use that money to some other purpose to help citizens with whatever they need.
That's right.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's just, but I I we're we're in anomalous times, so. My suspicion is that when we get into that analysis, we're gonna find a lot of things that are anomalous, not really true, long-term overfunding. Maybe I'm wrong, but we'll see.
I think that there are a few things we should be looking at and I'm not gonna go into detail at this time, but there are things to look at. Um, alright, so that's where we're at with sales tax. And I think that looking at, do we forecast it a little less than five percent? That's a reasonable thing and we'll look at that on Monday.
What, just off the top of your head, what's our reduction from projection to reality? Is it about five million dollars less?
No, it's a million. If you saw the million that were down.
It's a million?
You saw.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's about a million.
Okay. Out of a hundred and fifteen or something?
A million dollars out of a hundred and fifteen million is what the sales tax is.
So, we were less than one percent off. I mean, to put it in context, which doesn't seem.
Yeah. Which is pretty darn good.
Which doesn't seem, given all the variables that you juggle, doesn't seem to be too too bad.
Thank you. Um, alright, so let's start looking at property tax. This is the, oh, good. Um, this is the document in your packet. And it goes back to two thousand one. And this is the growth in the property tax levy. And I wanted to share this document with you because what you see here. Especially in the more recent years, um, is steady growth in value. Total assessed value. And and that trend starts in twenty thirteen. It goes up a few million a year. Um, there's a pretty good bump in twenty seventeen. Um, big bump in twenty-two. Uh, and the twenty-three numbers are in italics. Because this was my best guess. I didn't have numbers from the assessor yet on total assessed value. I had new construction. Um, so this was my best guess of where we'd be. Um, the combination of, uh, one percent increase plus new construction. Created an increase in revenue of approximately one point two million dollars. And this is the the new general fund levy. And the other thing that you see is when assessed value, total assessed value goes up. It's going up at a rate faster than the levy goes up. And that means the levy rate, the price per thousand that the taxpayer pays, goes down. The, because you get to the levy rate by dividing the amount of the levy by total assessed value. It's how you get to the rate.
To get to a zero point nine four, that is just incredible.
Well, I've got new numbers. This is why we started a little late this morning.
Just to your perspective, the maximum levy rate is point point eight.
Just to down down to half.
Just to bring that back, so.
So, I am now going to.
Two thousand and in one, we were bumping against the 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 levy rate.
Dollar eighty?
Yeah.
It was, it was starting to get up there.
Yeah, that was, that that, and that's concerning, extremely concerning.
In this matter, like, for example, when we were, when there was a proposal for the courthouse.
Yeah.
The the car you are at a one-eighty means you couldn't, you couldn't ask for that extra, but you know, ca- because their capacity wasn't there.
Right, you're 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 right, and and as you may recall, in that analysis, we went through assuming. Uh, because we needed to make sure that we are financially responsible to assume some down on the valuations.
Mm-hmm.
So, at some point, we go to one-sixty at the end, on that on that model.
So, you don't have this piece of paper in your packet. I'm gonna hand it out in just a moment, and it's not in your electronic file either. Um, because I just did it this morning. And I wasn't planning to do this until I got the new total assessed value from the assessor last night. And it is a big change. Um, so, I'm gonna walk through how it impacts our levy. This is how we calculate the levy.
What what's the number instead of forty-nine, instead of fifty, what is it?
We'll, we'll get to that in a minute, let me walk through how it's calculated. Yep, and you wanna get to the bottom line, I wanna walk us through.
You wanna ease us into it, I can agree.
Well, I can't, I still can't believe it. Um, and and the impact, it's important to note why there's an impact at all. So, here's how you calculate a levy in a nutshell, these are the steps. There's a huge long worksheet I fill out that I'm not going to present. But, the first thing is the one percent levy, and I'm gonna make this bigger because it's still hard to see on the screen, isn't it? Um, that's not everything. Yeah. Alright, so here's the steps. First thing you do is calculate the one percent increase. So, based on last year's highest lawful levy, one percent gets us.
It's still around the four.
Four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Because it has nothing to do with assessed value. It's all about how much the levy is. The second item is new construction. You calculate new construction, and this is the number that Linda gave me on Sunday. Um, so, here's the, uh, new construction. You multiply that by last year's levy rate. And that adds eight hundred and eighty thousand to the levy. Then, we get a little bit of money off the assessed growth in value of state-assessed properties within our county.
Let me just ask you something as you're going through with your explanation here. Uh, it's been running about, uh, one-tenth to one percent all the way along here on that nine point, or point nine eight.
That's last year's levy rate.
Okay.
Yep, that's, that is the factor you use to to calculate how much we can increase this year's levy. For new construction and you use that same number for state-assessed property value.
And the new construction, significant increase from last year, just as a point out.
Yes, the new construction is way up from last year, seven hundred and twenty thousand, yes.
Is probably twenty percent. Yeah, twenty percent less, so just to put up perspective on that.
Huge growth in new construction, yeah, that that's gonna be part of the conversation in a minute. Um, so, here's your new highest lawful levy, forty-five million dollars. You add refunds from last year that the treasurer tells us about. They run at least a hundred thousand a year, sometimes more. So, I added that, and the new general fund levy is forty-five million, one hundred twenty-three thousand. Then, the board authorizes a road levy shift, and this is the number from last year. You haven't given me direction. I'm going to assume I'm gonna reduce it this year, but I haven't done that yet. Um, so, we add two and a half million that comes in on the road levy, uh, shift. So, new levy forty-seven, six twenty-three. Then, you all will remember, because you have worked hard in the legislature. Um, we have to back out the amount that goes to mental health and DD and to veteran services. From our general fund levy, it's a reduction from our general fund levy. And we've not been able to convince the legislature that they should change this. So, the new levy rate, this is where, uh, as total assessed value comes in. The new levy rate on a levy of forty-seven million dollars. Assuming total assessed value of forty-nine point nine million. Which I just assumed because I didn't have new number, billion, yes, billion, thank you, the number is so big. That drops the levy rate to ninety-five cents. And then, you calculate the amount that mental health and DD get. Based on their levy rate. Their levy rate doesn't change, it remains fixed. So, you calculate the amount that goes to mental health. By multiplying the total assessed value. By the levy rate for mental health. Point oh two five cents on the thousand. And we need to take one point two million out of the amount that would go to the general fund. And you do a similar calculation for veterans fund. That's where we get to forty-five point eight million of the levy for the general fund. So, that's, that's how we calculate the the levy.
So, it's two less, two million less than the what was proposed on the sheet?
It's about, well, it's.
Five million, huh?
See, this, the change here is pulling out the the mental health and and, yeah.
It's a little over four million, I see.
The calculation is forty-seven point six million and then you pull out the, um, mental health and veterans. Uh, set aside so we can collect forty-six point eight million. And remember, I have to set high, so I put an amount higher than that into the budget to give us lots of room.
So, the, and the, when they're comparing to the table, it is in the packet, and that table include.
That's the forty-seven.
Yeah, doesn't include taking out the veterans amendment.
Correct.
So, that's that's probably what you see.
Alright, so here's the new information I got today. It's, the new assessed value is sixty point four billion dollars.
Wonder why we're com- we're in compliance on on the property taxes thing, it's a little bit, you see.
Well.
That's what it is, is because the valuation of those properties is.
That that is, that is exactly what it is.
You say sixty?
Six zero, yes, sixty. I sent a note back to Linda and said, am I reading this right this morning? She said, yes, I am. So, here's the thing though, ladies and gentlemen. You calculate the general fund levy exactly the same. It's still one percent on last year's highest lawful levy. It's still new construction at last year's levy rate. It's still state-assessed, uh, growth at last year's levy rate. You add the refunds, you add the road levy. So, the, um, total levy is still exactly the same. Where this affects us is it drops the levy rate.
Zero point seventy.
Seventy-nine cents on the thousand. The levy rate is crazy low. And that's going to affect what we can claim in new construction last, next year. So, it's gonna have a dampening effect on our increase next year. But the other thing it does that impacts us in next year. Is you use that higher value to calculate the amount that goes to, uh, mental health and veterans. And so, we need to reduce the amount that's coming into the general fund. The impact is about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
So, what do you mean reduce?
Uh, we have to take, we will get less in the general fund from our levy. Because of the earmarks that have to go to mental health.
That's a fixed rate.
And, yep, because they're at a fixed rate, their rate's not affected.
Do you, you kinda, when you talk to the assessor's office, it almost sounds like, oh, maybe they made a mistake, you know?
I don't think they did make a mistake.
But I'm gonna just use as an example, just a piece of property that was brought to my attention was. Uh, forty-eight thousand dollar assessment. Against a building that has a shower and a toilet in it. And it's about ten by, eight by ten, I'm gonna say. And another building that has no power, water or anything in that. And it's a storage building and it's about twelve by twelve, maybe? No insulation, no, nothing in it. And they've got it at forty-eight thousand dollars for those two buildings. And to me, that's a mistake, but I don't know where it's gonna go, board of equalization, you know?
I'll tell you, I couldn't, uh, believe our, we received our property tax value statements from the assessor, just like everyone else did. And my husband opened them up and he couldn't quite believe what he was reading there. We think, we think that the assessor made a mistake on our property. Um, it's way too high, yeah. And and it's considering that the rate's going down and my, you know, value's going up, uh, uh, more than. uh, uh, more than I will pay in property taxes, not a lot, it's totally connected to the assessed value, but, but um, sixty million. And I have just, um, Nicole handed out the table, I did print it for you, so you can see it. But the fact that how we calculate the levy and that we are essentially this four hundred thousand that is less just from the extreme growth in assessed value, just about wipes out the one percent increase we got. I mean, if this isn't going to the legislature, that, that these two items shouldn't come off the top of our general fund, I don't know what.
I have a question, I'm, I'm confused on the subtract set of sides, right? So we have, on the update, we have sixty million, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand. And then we have, you know, the mental health, which is a twenty-five, the point zero two five percent, which comes out to one point five, and then the mental health um, that comes up six hundred and seventy-nine. How do we get forty-five from that if we're subtracting those two numbers from sixty?
From the forty-seven, six.
You, you, you subtract it from our levy.
Okay, so you're not subtracting it from the levy rate?
It doesn't come off the sixty billion in assessed value.
Okay.
Comes off of.
Don't, don't you have one more sheet to give us just now? Didn't you over?
She just, I, I, I showed you this, and then I showed you
That's the, this is the calculation. Oh, I see.
So you've got both.
Oh, it's on one sheet, yeah.
Yep. So I haven't factored this into the model yet. I'll be doing that, this is brand new, hot off the press. Uh, and the assessed value's just gone up crazy. With, and, and if we go back to the, um
Let, let me ask you this, as you're looking some stuff up. So you, you know, you said that you felt that there was possibly a mistake. I don't know what you're basing it on, I'm basing mine on there's no way in hell that if there's a value to those buildings, it might be a thousand dollars, and they've got it at forty-eight thousand. So that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah.
Is there a mistake?
I, I am not making the statement that I think that there is an error on the part of the assessor, I am not saying that.
There's a big, yeah.
Yeah.
I have a question, so this whole, like, if I know that it's more complicated than you just read the assessor's letter that went out, and, you know, you can see the complexity, because it's not just, like, we're just, we're laser focused on the county's general fund, piece of property tax, and property tax goes in more places.
That's right.
But it is true to some extent that you don't get a proportional increase in your property tax based on the percentage of your assessed value. And that's a function of this one percent cap, right? Which the legislature put into place in the late nineties or whatever it was. And I'm sure other states don't have that, or Washington didn't have that before then. So in that case, if we didn't have that cap, there'd be, I would imagine, a much, much, much more uh, strong incentive for a property owner to fight a assessment that he feels is too high. And the Board of Equalization would probably have thousands and thousands and thousands of more um challenges to assess values than they do under our system where there's a major dampening effect on that direct relationship.
So there, there is the dampening effect uh of the one percent on government, um, but not all taxing jurisdictions. So if you think about um the, the conversation we, we had with our bond advisor and bond counsel, that there's two kinds of bonds that we can issue. We can do a levy lift, um, which is then affected by the, this value, the levy rate comes down.
And that's voter approved, right?
Or you can
That's voter approved, though.
Yeah.
No, a levy lift would be voter approved, that's right. But you do your one percent, that's not voter approved, that, that's just the levy rate going up. Or we could do what's called excess, excess bonds, um, excess levy bonds. And that means that there's no cap uh on the levy. There, there, it's unlimited, unlimited general obligation bonds. And in those types of bonds, and you usually see them with school districts, it is X pennies per thousand on your property. That's not capped by the one percent. When this value goes up, your levy goes up for that district.
Yeah, that's what I meant when I said it's more complicated than just the county piece.
Right.
But, but, and I don't know what the percentage is, but
Right.
there would be more stronger incentive for property owners to fight assessments if it were across the board.
More of it were like that.
Yeah, if more of it were like that.
Yes, and then there's the fact that the state has excused itself from the one percent.
Yeah, that's so convenient, so convenient.
So what, is it possible to just, again, at the, at just a super ballpark, high level, is it po- possible to say what percentage of a tax, of a property owner's property tax is sub, is limited by the one percent versus the percentage of it that's not limited by that?
I, eh, maybe. Put that, put it on the list of a follow-up, um, and I'll look into that, because we know the various taxing. If you think about that dollar that we break down.
Yeah.
Um, I know that the piece that goes to the state is not limited by the one percent. I know that the cities and the county and the ports and the fire district, those are limited by the one percent.
The big chunk, though, is like school, but it's not just school laws, it's schools.
The schools, the, but schools piece is part of the state, and it is not limited by the one percent.
Okay, okay, well, then maybe it's not as much of a dampening as effect as I thought.
It has been until the state excused itself from the one percent.
I guess I'm, what I'm exploring in here, when did that happen? When did they excuse it?
I'd have to see exactly the year, is it two years?
Two years, yeah, it's when, uh, it was
I thought it was longer than that, pre-pandemic.
Yeah, you're right, it was two thousand and eighteen. In two thousand and nineteen, they gave a little uh break on the property taxes.
Yeah.
And for twenty twenty, we saw the huge increase because they needed to make that up.
That's right.
Um, so you're right, it's in two thousand and eighteen, and it was related to the last uh for, uh, the school funding.
The clearing.
The clearing.
Yeah.
What I'm trying to figure out is this new information that you're presenting, it already was higher, you know, but is this new information gonna gonna incite a, or outpouring of, of challenges to assess values?
I think that it will, because very few people understand, excuse me, very few people understand how we back into our levy, if you will. Um, most, oh no, I just lost my computer. Um, I need that power pack.
To the Board of Equalization, Board of Equalization buckle up.
There's gonna be, there's gonna be any data.
Well, and, but the downside is that
There's a perception that it goes up, yeah.
That the assessor challenges the Board of Equalization ruling to the state's Board of Equalization.
Okay.
And they always go with the assessor.
So it's
So it's a fight, and you think you're getting a deal, and then it goes on, and that comes usually about four years' fight. Before it gets
So it's quite a process.
And then it gets overturned at the state, the, the Board of Equalization ruling gets overturned at the state level, and it goes back to the original assessment that the assessor put on it, generally. Because generally, the way it works, I don't know how in this situation I'm referring to, that they could justify more than a couple thousand dollars at the most, you know? I don't know where it came from. That just makes me wonder if there is maybe a mistake somewhere along the line. If that happened on one return, could, you know, assessment, it could be on another, could be.
Alright, so property tax. It, it is, um, when we look at my model, it's gonna be about four hundred thousand less than what I had predicted just yesterday.
I wish the public can hear this conversation. You know, the assessed value and the levy rate, not that it's difficult to understand.
There's no way they could understand. I, I can barely understand myself, and I've had it drilled into me for the last six years.
Yeah, don't, don't tell our citizens short, but it is complicated.
Oh, I mean, it's just way, way, way too complicated. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know of other jurisdictions that do it the way we do it even.
I, I've
I think we're
I believe that our state is unique in the way that we do this.
It's unique in this, yeah. It's, it's
It's one of those things.
To me, it's kind of one of the problems, I mean, you heard me talk about trust. And, and it is one of the problems that contributes to that lack of trust of government. When things are so complicated that people can't get a grasp of it.
Yeah, it's one of the finance things in our state laws that I look at it and wonder who thought this was a good idea.
Who came up with this one relation to got legal levied at this, this complexity level?
What, what had they been drinking? You know, in the middle of the night. Um, alright, so I am signing back in. Look how handy these power packs came.
And then you didn't have to fall onto the table to plug in. So the road levy shift, that's the two point five, right? So even that forty-seven could be less, just depending on how much we decide to shift. We decide to shift less than
Right, and, and you'll see in the model, I have an assumption that the board will approve reducing the levy shift by two hundred and fifty thousand this year, as you have in the past few years. Alright, so let's take a look at the model. It's taking me a minute to find my stuff, can? My apologies. Let's take a little bit to find the right file. Okay, let's see, screen. So this is the model that we have all come to be familiar with. Uh, you have a printout, I see it was printed on some pretty small paper, um.
Which is, what is this one called?
This is the forecast model. I don't know, is that available in their
I think, I think it's six, it says estimating the Thurston County General Fund.
Yes, great. So I'm gonna hide a couple of columns so that I can make it a little bigger. But all you'd see with those columns is, before I hide them, I will show that the normal reversion trend way back in um twenty fifteen, we only reverted like one point four percent, the reversion was quite low. Um, if we go back even farther, you'll find that the average reversion is around three percent on average, which is why that's what I predict into the future. Um, the last few years, the reversion has been high. Um, and the, um, fund balance has been growing at a pretty steady rate. So the, what you see in this model is we had an ending fund balance in twenty fourteen of just over ten million dollars.
In
In twenty fourteen. And now in twenty twenty-two, we are predicting an ending fund balance of thirty-nine million dollars.
Does any of that money, any of the federal ARPA money here?
No. Well, well, I, I
I mean, we did that ten million dollar shift.
We, we, we've done the lost revenue, so
Right, wasn't that ten million?
Some of it is. In twenty twenty, that was before ARPA, it was the CRF, the Coronavirus Relief Fund. Um, we pulled in a significant amount of CRF money and used that uh to substitute for some of our general fund. And that was how we uh did a big growth in the fund balance in twenty twenty. Then in twenty twenty-one, we pulled in lost revenue in the amount of two point five million into the general fund. So that grew the fund balance even more. And this was a, a planned growth in fund balance. Um, in twenty twenty-two, when we have the ARPA conversation later this month, I will be asking the board for approval to pull in the one point five million that you see in this forecast, um, that is supporting fund balance this year. And you'll see in twenty-three and twenty-four, I'm also assuming one point five million from ARPA. That only adds up to, I think, seven million dollars. And it leaves three million in lost revenue that the board is able to spend on anything that you see fit.
One time.
One, yes, it's gotta be one-time money. It's one-time money, you need to spend it on one-time items. And part of the conversation we've been having, and you'll see that we've assumed it in the budget, uh, is that we would spend a chunk of that three million dollars on a one-time bonus to our employees. So, but that three million is not factored in to the general fund, we factored in seven million from ARPA.
How, how come in nineteen and twenty-one, you've got, both those years, you've got uh the hundred percent of growth, you've got a reduction? What, what, what was that about?
What are you looking at, Commissioner?
Uh, almost down to the bottom line percent of growth.
That is in growth in expenditures, and you see total expenditures in twenty twenty were one million, or, or uh twelve, one hundred and twelve, I'm gonna say it right, a hundred and twelve point eight million dollars.
Right.
In twenty twenty-one, county offices and departments spent less, only a hundred and eight point three million dollars. So the growth in expenditures went down. It was negative growth, if you will, or a reduction of four point one percent. People spent less.
And then is that what contributed then to the ending fund balance?
That is one of the things that contributed to ending fund balance, yes.
So I jumped ahead, what's going on between twenty twenty-six and twenty thirty? What's going on between 2026 and 2030?
26 to 2030 is growth in expenditures based on what offices and departments have asked for in the, um,
So this includes all of that?
Yes, this includes everything. So this picture, this picture right here, here's a graph. There it is. Where you've not only gone far below your two-month target, but well below what your cash flow needs to be. That is if you were to say yes to everything in the preliminary midterm budget.
And my next question for that, is that included under the expenditures or is it?
It is included in both expenditures and revenue. And to walk through this chart, now I'm gonna hide a couple of columns.
It, it just, while you do this, and what you see is on the first column on a lot of expenditures, most of the requests are ongoing. So when there's an ongoing, then the baseline becomes higher. From 121 million to 127, it continues to grow.
That's right. So we have assumed.
That is, that is the, that is the issue. Most of the requests are not one-time.
Everything is ongoing. It, it's pretty much all ongoing costs. So here are the changes at a high level in the preliminary requests. There's an increase in, on the revenue side. I've adjusted property tax, and it needs to be less than what it is here, based on what I was just showing you. I've adjusted sales tax down, and that creates less of a base in future years. And we've adjusted all others, so that we're starting where we're at. I'm assuming 1.5 million in lost revenue coming in. And then here are the new things in this preliminary request. New grants in the amount of 284,000. And you see on the expenditure side, a little less that they expect to spend. Other revenue adjustments are going down. And those are the things that we were talking about earlier. Less money for passports, less money for district court collections, less money for sheriff law enforcement services. All coming down, they're all adjusted down in next year's revenue by those offices and departments. We entered an increase for franchise fees. We did adjust, um, other, well, we adjusted the sales tax down. So the total revenue is now assumed. We did adjust for the indirect cost plan. If you remember when Ron Haney was here presenting the cost plan to you, he said that the cost plan revenue is increasing by 756,000. So you see that on a revenue line. And in policy, there's an increase, and I don't remember exactly what this 98,000 is in policy, but there's an increase in revenues on the policy level that you'll see, that's 89,000 dollars. Here's the assumption that we'll reduce the road diversion by 250,000 for a grand total of budgeted revenue next year of 115,795,000. That's the new number. On the expenditure side, here's your approved budget, 121.4 million. That is approved budget as of the budget amendment. The next line is the reversion, that I assume at 3% of the approved budget. And now here's all the new things that are driving costs up. This includes a 2.5% COLA for all employees in '23 and in every future year. It includes the 4.1% COLA for the corrections officers in 2023. And it includes the 4% COLA for correction deputies in 2023, which is part of the contract that you've already assumed. So you're locked into those amounts. Now, I'm going to say right now, don't, don't get hung up on those precise numbers because when we were looking at them yesterday, I'm not certain, this is part of the scrub we need to do. I'm not certain that those amounts are right, so we need to revisit those. But the, the fact is that you are locked into a 4.1% for the sheriff deputies and a 4% for correction deputies.
That was a 2.5% for customer, for all employees related to the general fund is not. I don't recall the.
The, we're not locked into that yet, but I'm assuming that the board, that, that's an assumption that they can discuss.
Right, but what I'm saying is, is the, let's say the 2023, the 1.2 million assumption at this point. Does that include all general fund or we need to take the other funds out of it?
No, no, that's general fund only, but we, we need to check these numbers because I don't know that they're accurate. And that's not a comment on anyone that's been doing the work so far. That's just, we, we need to do the scrub. So, but it's gonna be a chunk of change, is the point. When we scrub these numbers, I don't think they're gonna change by a lot. Then we, you've already heard that we got the news that medical inflation next year from the PEB is expected to be 12%, not 5%. So we adjusted that, 344,000 is the increase over the 5% that we had already assumed in this budget. Here's the grant money.
Wait, wait a minute, 12% more than the 5%? We said 17%?
No, we, we had, we had 5% in and we added 7% to that. So the 344 represents the additional 7%. All right, here, the next line is the grant money. It, it matches the revenue. You should say yes to that because it's coming in with revenue. And then here's the money that we talked to Tammy about because our bill from the risk pool is going up so much. This is one of the big hits, right here.
About a billion dollars more, really, if you think about it.
It's 2 million more to the general fund to keep our fund whole. And I bring that down, I'm assuming only about half that much ongoing. I'm, I'm assuming that half of it is a one-time thing. I don't know how good that assumption is, but it, it's a, it, this is a huge hit on the general fund. If I take out that assumption that, that only half of it is ongoing, then your chart looks even worse than what it does now. Oh gee. Just saying.
Why wouldn't it be ongoing?
Because Tammy set the contribution in 2023 to make up these extraordinary payments that she had to make and bring the fund balance in the county risk fund back up. I think that that level, to, to sustain that level going forward is not that big bulk one-time. Some of that's one-time, some of it's ongoing, but some of it is one-time.
So, I don't know, that just, I felt like that just kind of tripped us up, right?
That, that was a big, that was a big piece of, of what has put us in a bind this year. Otherwise, we'd be clicking along pretty darn good.
Other counties were looking at us. They said, I was speaking with other counties about it, and they were like, yeah, we saw Thurston County's rate. Everyone's like, too bad for you guys. And I was like, tell me about it.
It's a, it's a budget buster type of number, and that's exactly what it's done.
Can we get like another talk about that? Because I, I, I get it, but then at the same time, I don't. And it's, it, it just seems like we're so out of proportion with the rest of the counties and.
Right.
It's a history, there's a history there. And that, that counts against us.
Yep. Uh, okay, so, next slide. The indirect rates that you've approved are a total increase of only 183,000. Revenue's gone up by 756, but the costs have only gone up by 183. Then there's, um, you will recall that we've given offices and departments an opportunity to move money out of the first year into the second year. So it's a net zero impact, and you'll see in '22, there's a reduction of 349, and in '23, it goes up, 349. And so really not an effect on the general fund, it's just delayed spend. Other maintenance adjustments, we'll break this down in the meetings, you'll get the detail. But right now, rolled up for other maintenance items, 716,000. And then there are policy requests other than the COLAs of 1.8 million. And we'll give you on Monday, we'll give you a list of the policy items so you can get a feel for what.
But then you said 7.5 million last time.
7.5 million is the total change from the current budget, 121 million, to the proposed budget of 128 million. And then this model has also a 3% reversion built in. So the policy isn't 7 million, it's the total change in the budget. So the picture is not pretty. And this is what I was talking about yesterday when I said you can't afford to do it all. You're going to have to make some choices about what to fund. And I think that when we start playing with the numbers, just gonna, it's, it's read-only, it's my file. All right, well, I won't save it. But if we took out, um, if you took out all the policy level stuff in both years, and that alone, and it'd get you over the cash flow line, but it doesn't get you to, uh, two-month reserve. And so if we took out, I have no idea what these other maintenance items are, and if you can, even can take them out, you probably can't. But we'll, we'll be looking at that. If you took that out, it's getting closer, at least you've recovered.
Wait, where'd you just take out?
I took out all the maintenance, all the other maintenance items.
716.
Right.
Line. So if you took out the 716,000, and then 1 million, it's 159.
Yeah. And, and I just said, I don't know exactly what those are. Will, you will, so I don't know if you even can eliminate them. But if you just took out that much, you're still not where you need to be. If, if, and I am not recommending this, so sheriff, please don't, please don't think I'm suggesting that we should do this. But this is, if you took out and told the sheriff to absorb the salary increases next year, let's just say you did that, it still doesn't get you to where you need to be. And that's my point. You could, you could choose to do that, but it wouldn't get you what you need. So why would you? You're gonna be talking about, do we really fund the risk pool fund at the, the rate, the, I think that we've been funding it 86%? Maybe we drop to the minimum 80%, we don't transfer this much to the risk pool. Maybe we have to look at, I'm, I'm very unhappy to say, maybe we don't make a, oh, no, there, none of this is rainy day fund worthy.
No, I know.
No, this is, this is the hard management of a county budget. Maybe you don't reduce the road diversion this year. Maybe there, there are things that we can talk about.
Maybe you do more.
Maybe, this is ongoing money, so, um, using more of the, um, lost revenue to shore it up is a Band-Aid fix that you shouldn't do because that's one-time money that you'd be using for ongoing costs. And that won't get you anywhere. So these are the conversations that you're going to need to have as you deliberate in October.
Perfect time to. For a sandwich.
Just depressing.
Okay, that's 12:06, we're going to take a break and I'll be back.
When are we restarting? I gotta get my car over to the dealer. This might be my best chance to do that. I'll probably just take my sandwich and go. So it'll probably take me half an hour.
Yeah, 30 minutes.
We'll probably wait for you, is that reasonable?
It's my call.
9:00 PM and we are picking up, Robin?
Yes, let's continue. So we were looking at the model. I'll go back to that just for a few more minutes and then we're going to shift and have conversation about historical trends. And here's how I share and this is the screen. So, one thing that you asked about is what if, what if we said less than 5% growth in sales tax? So, we can look at this, less than 5% growth in sales tax, which is possible.
What if what again? Like say 3% or something.
So let's say 3%. If I change this next year only to 3%, then that goes down to 26, just under 26.6 million from 27 million. So there's a small drop there. And the graph, so I'm gonna undo that.
Maybe you have.
And here's the graph. And now, if I put that back in place, that's the change.
Why does that look better than what you showed us before?
It doesn't look better. It looks worse.
No, it looks better than this.
Yeah, it's looking better because I've got some of the what if we didn't do this, what if we didn't do that, and built in, right?
I saw the delta, but it was you.
Yeah, but it just, it drops it down. And what I would say about forecasts is something you never want to do is inflate your revenue forecast so that you can buy more stuff. You should never ever do that. And I'm not suggesting that you do that here. You want to find a reasonable revenue forecast. And I do believe that 5% growth is reasonable. You don't want to just set it extremely low because then you're losing the ability to fund certain things. And what you absolutely do not want to do is understate your revenue to the extent that you have to start doing cuts to services, budget cuts. You don't want to do that. So, the goal for the revenue forecast is reasonable estimates that we've got an expectation of actually being able to collect. And then you set your spending accordingly. But, so that's the, that's the effect that three, from 5% to 3% would have. And we can look at that more next week. So, I'm going to get out of the model now. And we're going to, excuse me, take a look. Did I stop sharing? Yes. We want to take a look at the historic trends.
Before you, one last comment on this. So you, like, I know you guys communicate at some level with the different departments and offices. And then there's always the public as well, they're trying to figure this out. And I'm just, my seatmates, I think would agree with me. I'm kind of concerned about the, the very bizarre sort of juxtaposition of this mass, this extremely high fund balance versus the future projection. And then this talk that we're, you know, oh my gosh, we got to cut this, we got to cut that. Well, we've already heard that. We've already heard that from people inside the county. I won't name any names, but we've already heard from internal groups within the county who you'd think would be a little more savvy to how this budget process works, that they don't understand why would we be talking about this when we're sitting on $39 million fund balance. So, I just want to make sure that we're all through this process, this fall, that we're really clear for the public and for our different offices and departments about what, why, why that, why that seeming apparent discrepancy exists, what it means and how we manage it, so that people don't think we're, we're doing something kinky. You know, which is kind of what we were being accused of like six or nine months maybe. It was at the tail end of last year's budget cycle, I can't remember. But, it was just, you know, and it's hard to explain sometimes.
It is hard to explain. And the value of a long-term forecast is that you're, you're, you're doing the right thing and taking the long view. But most people just look at where are we today? And it makes it extremely difficult. And that's a conversation we've been having at the FMC is how do we convey in an easy to understand way that we've purposefully built this budget up with the expectation of spending it down over time? That we've already programmed the bulk of those expenditures that are going to happen over time? And that the board has planned to hit a point of equilibrium in the future? And I think that having this model that shows this is where our revenues come from. This is where our expenditures go. This is what the drivers are, the major drivers, is the conversation that needs to be had. It's not simple and it is very complicated. But I don't think it's beyond the grasp of people if they're willing to, to listen and have the conversation.
Yeah, I was just asking that you keep that message upfront. Because there's various points where you give an overview to the board at the beginning of a public hearing or you give, you know, as we start our deliberation, you know, various points where you're kind of laying the law of the land. Make sure that message is right up front so that, you know, folks can kind of grapple with what they're seeing. That doesn't, may not make sense to them if they're not, you know,
Right.
down in the weeds with us here.
I also, at any point, invite anyone who wants to have a conversation about how this model is built and has opinions, if you will, of things that we might look into changing. I'd love to hear from people and have the conversation. Because we can show, and Nicole, in the last month, has spent a lot of time on the forecast. We can show exactly what the revenue assumptions are for every line item. And if someone's got different assumptions, like if someone thinks we should be forecasting sales tax at more than 5% or less than 5% or put a seasonal spin to it, be happy to have that conversation about what's, what's reasonable to assume.
Mostly, the only thing the public pays attention to is the notice from the assessor, mostly. That's the reality.
That's a big piece.
Yeah, and this is, you know, real time, even as we speak.
For sure.
All right, historical trends. See where I have it? Oh, that's why I didn't have that front center. I am afraid that this is super small and hard to see.
Is this in the packet or no?
This is in your packet.
Okay, skip the colored ones in this page. Page.
What's this called? Oh, I'm sorry. I completely skipped the, an important piece that lays out where we're at.
Thank you for saying that. What are we doing, what are we looking for now?
This one.
The colorful chart.
What's it called?
It's what's that called?
It's the general fund requests.
It's number eight, 2022 general fund request.
Page 10.
Yeah, we're going to share this. This starts to show you, this, this is the breakdown by department of where the increases are. It's this one. And I'm going to make that bigger once that thing goes away. All right, so we're going to start with the green columns. This is 2022. And what you see on the left-hand side is current, current budget with amendment one. And then the midterm change requests for 2021, pretty straightforward, $21,000 in planning, the planning department that aligns with grant revenue. I'm going to skip CPED for a moment. The decrease in district court is a kind of a simple adjustment. And then the $348,000 in non-departmental, we are asking to just roll forward. So it's a reduction in '22 and an increase in '23. $708,000 in CPED, as you'll see when we get into the details, is to shift more of the business center activities to the general fund. So they're asking to reduce the impact on the building reserve account and increase general fund funding in the business center. And CPED, I think, is one of the departments that I will invite in that first week of October to have a conversation with the board so that you can see exactly what they're doing in this request and a few others that they've put forward. That's the big change in 2022. Moving into 2023. The first column in yellow for '23 is where we're at today by office and department. Then you see the maintenance level adjustments. Pretty, pretty evenly spread. I don't think that there's any one officer department that really stands out proportionately. And then the.
Are you looking at the yellow?
I'm looking at the blue where you've got a big increase in the sheriff's office. But it's proportional to the budget because most of the stuff in maintenance level is risk. The risk pool's there. I'm looking at Nicole, what are the big items in the?
Risk pool, health benefits.
The health benefits, the COLA's in policy level, right?
The COLA's in policy.
Um, but.
Yes, those are the two major levels.
Yeah, the two major things in maintenance level are the change to the risk pool and the increase in the medical.
Can you go back to yellow though? What is yellow?
The yellow is the approved 2023 budget today.
And when it shows me 20 and 5% and 15% sheriff's increase versus everybody else at like 1%, what is that telling, what is that?
That is that the sheriff has 15% of the total budget.
Oh, okay.
The.
So that doesn't say anything. That's just a breakdown of who's.
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, because I, that's there because I used to often get questions about who's got the biggest share. So it's an added one.
So the two together is 35% of the budget?
That's right, for the sheriff.
And that's our total budget? We're talking general fund?
General fund.
General fund, okay.
General fund.
That has been consistent.
Okay.
Very consistent.
Very consistent, about 35%.
Okay.
Yep, and law and justice overall, about 76%. So, current budget. Then midterm maintenance level, risk, medical inflation are the big pieces. The policy level, the big piece there is the COLA's. So you see it broken down by officer department.
You're calling that policy level even though we sign those contracts and those are.
Two contracts are signed.
Yeah.
Eight are open. So, we can certainly move the, I, I did lump all of the goals together, but I can split them out and move some of them to maintenance level. Some of the things that we have in policy level are things you might think of making a policy decision about. And we're going to give you a list of exactly the things that are policy-driven. But.
We made that policy decision and we approved those contracts.
You, you made the policy decision to approve the COLA, but one of the things you might consider is if the sheriff can absorb the cost.
So that's the option that you have, the board has on the policy level. That is why it's on the policy.
That's the policy piece of it. How do we pay for it if?
So, this is not whether you retract from the actions that you took in the proof of the contracts. This is an option the board, the board has as to how to fund it.
And we can't do it with ARPA?
It goes to ongoing costs considering increases now.
No, you really shouldn't.
There's, there's a, there's a lot of, we, we need to. So, you could do it one time for like this year, pay a larger share than the 1.5 in lost revenue. You could do it with lost revenue, but it's a one-time deal. If we were talking about using the federal side of the ARPA money, not the lost revenue, then there are a lot of rules that we would need to wade through about incentive pay that we have completely stayed away from. There's rules about who you can pay and their activities must be directly related to COVID actions, COVID response actions. So the sheriffs wouldn't necessarily qualify at this point.
But how about corrections? Would they qualify? I mean, they've been working at the jail and then.
So, some of the activities at the jail could be considered new activities that are directly related to reducing the spread. But in general, to just pay for correction costs with ARPA, and you wouldn't want to pay for the COLA because then we'd get into the enhanced pay, incentive pay kind of trap. So then we'd be looking for how many of the corrections officers are doing activities that are directly COVID-related. It couldn't be just general population that we do day in, day out. So we could look at it, but it would be a stretch that obviously sounds going. We could certainly look at it, but it.
But it still, still will be.
It was, would be one time. We want to help you in the future years.
Well, no, I'm, I mean, I'm helping, I'm, my kind of thought in even asking for ARPA or bringing ARPA up is something to kind of help soften the blow of the risk management things and.
It's ongoing.
I know it's ongoing, but at least it'll kind of, I guess, help ease it, more to it.
Using one-time revenue for ongoing costs is not.
There's no need on that as well.
Yeah. So, so, back to this though. You, you see from this, and again, we'll have a list for you on Monday of exactly what the requests are for your consideration. But this is the breakdown by office and department. So, going to switch to the historic trends because I think that this is where we can start to get into a conversation about how much is getting reverted in any given year. a, a conversation about how much is getting reverted in any given year. And the way to read this table is we'll, we'll start off with the assessor. In 2008, the assessor's budget was three million, seven hundred eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. In 2008, the assessor actually spent three million, seven hundred eleven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars. They reverted to the general fund seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. That was two percent that they turned back in, in that year. And the number in red was that their budget in 2008 was twelve point three percent more than in 2007.
I want to understand. Their budget was three point three to three point seven, that's twelve percent? I guess so. And then dropped down to three, back to three, okay, I got you.
Right.
Top line, year to year.
Right, and, and we know that the counties started making some pretty significant budget reductions in 2009 in response to the recession. So it's not at all surprising in 2009 and 2010 that there were reductions in the vast majority of these budgets. So, if you fast-forward, and unfortunately, this is a PDF and I, I can't lock my screen. But you fast-forward to 2022. What you see in this table is the assessor's budget is now four million, nine hundred ninety-two thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. That's the budget request, right? That's the request.
Yes, yeah, that includes the request.
Yep, that includes everything that he's asked for this year. The number in italics is the amount that the assessor's office provided on their financial plan, their projection of what they'll spend this year. So the assessor has said that this year, his office will spend four million, eight hundred thirty-seven thousand, four hundred eighteen dollars. That means they will revert a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And the increase in the assessor's budget was seven point two percent, that's kind of a side note. If you look at '21, the assessor reverted a hundred and ninety-two thousand. In 2020, they reverted sixty-nine thousand. 2019, the budget was a little tight for the assessor, or perhaps they shifted more of the cost for that FTE. You will recall, there's an FTE that the assessor bills to the REIT tech fund, that the board has given him authorization to charge his budget that to the general fund as his budget will bear. So that, that year got much closer. But overall, the assessor comes in at or above well, pretty consistently over fifty thousand with the exception of 2019, over the last few years. In the last two years, quite a bit more. The auditor is the next line down, the auditor has been reverting since 2016 a few hundred thousand a year. I don't, I don't have labels and these numbers are hard to see. The next is the clerk's office. The clerk's office is reverting a significant amount of money in '21 and '22, that's the Blake money. But if you look back at 2020, the clerk might have had some, we might have had Blake money in 2020. When did we start putting in money for '21?
Got it.
So, so I'm not quite sure why the clerk reverted four hundred thousand in 2020. We were all being pretty conservative in 2020, in anticipation of a fiscal cliff that didn't come. If you look back prior to that, the clerk was reverting less. But in the last few years, a pretty significant amount of reversion for the clerk. And the clerk has been actively talking to you about the inability to fill her positions. So I think this is a combination of vacancies and Blake money. It's really driving that. The next line is the commissioner's office, you'll see that the commissioners historically come in fairly close to the budget, about three percent, but last three to four percent is normal for the commissioner's office, but this year it looks like we're gonna revert about five hundred and eighty-five thousand. And as I said earlier, the big chunk of that, some of that is salary savings, but the really big chunk is that we are not moving to the atrium in the time that was anticipated in the budget. So a lot of that reversion is wow, a lot of it is the atrium. Sorry, got distracted by the next line. The next line is planning. It is your CPED. The growth in the amount of general fund available to CTE is basically due to going to a direct appropriation model. And their last financial plan doesn't look like they're going to spend half of what the board has appropriated. And that's part of the conversation. This includes the additional money that they're asking for, that's seven hundred thousand. But even if they didn't get that, they're projecting a reversion of money. So a conversation with Josh, as I said earlier, in October is in order to talk about what is going on in his budget. The next one is the coroner. The coroner comes in usually extremely tight, as you see in the past. But that turned around last year when you funded a position that he has been completely unable to fill. So the under expenditures in the coroner's budget are mainly about that. And then last year, that money forward, though, didn't we, for the truck?
We moved it forward, but it wouldn't be reflected in the bottom line.
Okay. So the, the under expenditure in 2021 is the fact that he couldn't get a vehicle timely. So that's a one-time thing, coroner's budget is normally extremely tight. So basically what you see as you look down this chart is most of the offices, like district court, we don't know why they're reverting so much money this year. That's one of the ones where we're gonna have to look closer at. Historically, district court has come in pretty close. There was a big increase in their budget and we've got to find out what's going on there. The emergency services reverts quite a bit of money, that is in part. They need to be doing better alignment with the federal grants they're getting in. There's so much money flowing in right now around emergency funding. So a lot of the reversion is around authority for federal grants that they have not spent in the current year. One of the offices that tends to turn in a lot of money is juvenile court. Many hundreds of thousands, we've seen the court come in and voluntarily eliminate positions or reduce their budget. But I think we need to take a hard look at why they're reverting a half a million dollars a year. What's going on there? And is that, that's not new, given current workforce trends. Because if you look back a few years, they revert hundreds of thousands every year. Looking at non-departmental. Non-departmental, you tend to put a little bit of money for special projects in non-departmental that don't always follow through. So in 2020, we reverted three point three million out of non-departmental. That was planned, and we did it by shifting a lot of costs to the coronavirus relief fund.
In '21?
That was in '20.
Yes.
Non-departmental.
Non-departmental. You'll see a three point three million dollar reversion in non-departmental. That was '20, then in 2018, the board had parked some money for a special project that we did not do in 2018. In 2021, non-departmental is underspent because that's where we put some money if we needed it for COVID response, and we did not use that. And in 2022, we've got the same thing going on. There's money for COVID that we will not use this year. Looking for some of the big reversions. Planning department is the way they have authority for federal grants that they generally don't use. Now, I don't know how planning came in with only a dollar to spare.
The coroner had the same in a previous year, this one, you, at the, at the, we made it whole at the end of the last budget.
I know what happened with the coroner, I didn't think that happened in planning, but we're gonna look at that. It's extremely unusual.
Yeah, I, I, I think the board needs to-
It was?
Yeah, to come up with that at one, because it was an adjustment on the last budget amendment.
I want to draw your attention, I'm looking for the sheriff, prosecuting attorney tends to turn in a few hundred thousand a year. The last two years have been the Blake money, and he's not been able to fill positions for Blake or the court backlog. But we put quite a bit of Blake money in the prosecutor's office and in the public defense, same kind of thing. So they've been reverting a lot of money recently, that never happened in the past. In the sheriff, you see that this year, the sheriff anticipates reverting two hundred and forty-four thousand out of law enforcement, and four hundred and seventy-two thousand out of corrections. And what I want to say there is that these projections include for 2022 the expectation that they will absorb the higher COLA in both the sheriff and corrections offices. And they're still going to revert a few hundred thousand dollars.
I thought you, why would it assume that, I thought you said we were, that was a decision that we got to make.
For 2022. Their 2022 financial plan assumes that, so they got funded for a two and a half percent COLA. They actually got a four percent COLA. And the sheriff's office is able to absorb the difference this year.
Because you knew they were on the track to, to revert.
Yeah.
Because that contract goes into effect like this month.
It wouldn't, it was retroactive. It was retroactive generally first of this year.
Yeah.
So it's '22, '23, '24, in three years. The other contracts that you will see are '23, '24, and '25.
Right.
So for 2022-
Yes.
They're absorbing.
Yeah.
They are absorbing the correct.
Not 2023?
That's correct. And the reason that the corrections reversion is as high as it is, part of that is the contract beds. When we have zero people in contract beds and yet they have a substantial budget for contract beds.
But that can change, right, as we open up and-
Well, they have not had, using contract beds even prior to the pandemic.
Twenty, I think in 2018 was, or early 2019 was the last time we saw people in contract beds.
They have, they have not been using contract beds.
So what do those funds get used for? How much is set aside, how much do they set aside for it?
I'll have, I, I- Do you remember what that number was?
Oh, I, I will be guessing.
Yeah, we'll have to look that up for you, it's a few hundred thousand.
Can, I guess, can we ask that for the sheriff for the October presentations, is, is kind of-
We can invite the sheriff in to talk about that in particular, yes, we can.
I'm, I'm not sure if other commissioners are curious, but I'm curious to see like
I, I am going to strongly recommend that you significantly reduce the sheriff's contract bed budget. I'm, I am absolutely going to recommend that.
And perhaps-
And they know that, do what?
And perhaps, if not, a, a budget proviso.
Proviso, or park a little bit of money in non-departmental that we could release to them if they need it, but they haven't been using contract beds. But they need beds, if you think about the jail.
Could those contract, whatever they're, you know, whatever, however much they're using for contract beds, I apologize, but I don't know.
Hmm, that's okay.
Be used for, for them to absorb a possibility, their, you know, the corrections COLA and throughout, so then-
So why not just shift it out of contract bed line item to a salaries line item?
It was an option, for sure.
On a permanent basis. And if they need contract bed money, come in later.
Yes, okay. Yeah, I would like to know, you know, hear from the sheriff's office on kind of why they have that line item. So if it's not, if it hasn't been used even before the pandemic.
And they can show that they've reverted it, I mean, if you look at their reversions every year, they are substantial. They've reverted it, but that's money that they're sitting on, that why would you give them an increase when they're just gonna revert hundreds of thousands of dollars?
Mostly it's wages, you know, just the spokes there.
In corrections, it's a few hundred thousand in contract bed money.
Oh, oh, on that, a few hundred, John?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it, it's, I think it's over three hundred.
I think so, but I don't want to commit to a number until we look it up.
Yeah, because the majority of version is contract beds, has been.
Yeah, it has been for a while, contract beds and overtime, as they didn't use. Contract beds and overtime that they didn't use. Another one where you're seeing substantial reversions is Superior Court. Started in 2020. Probably tied to cutting down the, shutting down courts for a while, but we'd wanna look into that.
I mean, does District Court have the same?
District Court has a huge reversions, but they have every year for a very long time.
Okay.
Many years.
I was wondering if that was like maybe a comparison with, District Court got shut down as well, so.
No, Superior Court, they were coming in closer to 3% or less reversion, but now that's popped up tremendously. So, you see the, in the bottom line on page four, in normal years, going all the way back to 2007, offices and departments have reverted around $3 million. Few years were higher. But that's where I get that 3% to 5% is normal. You see it on the last page. And then, in 2020, we reverted 7.6% in '21, 7.2%. And again, part of that was planned because we used some of that federal money to offset our costs in a way that built up fund balance. But there's something else going on here. And I think that we need to get to the bottom of that. Because again, you want offices and departments to have a bit of a cushion to operate within. But if they're just gonna turn back hundreds of thousands of dollars, that's money that you can be programming for other things. Or in this case, not pushing your fund balance down below your target amount. So, this is just back pocket kind of information as we go into what will you consider funding and how to set your, your target funding amount. We're gonna look next at workforce trends. I haven't got an hour left. I'm going to focus on the general. Oh, no, I've got both general and total here. So, once again, sharing my screen. What's on the screen right now is general fund. I wanna go away. And we go all the way back to 1993 and take a snapshot of that year of 2008, which was the pre-recession year to show that there was quite a bit of growth from 1993 to 2008. And then in 2009, that's the year that we cut a ton of FTEs in response to the recession. And then it's been growing back over time. So, when an officer department tells you that we have fewer FTEs today than we did in 2000, say, you've got a chart that, that we can pull for you and say, here's, here's the FTE trend. One of the things you need to know about this particular one that is general fund, if you look over starting in 2019, you see some numbers in orange. In each of those offices or departments, we started doing direct appropriation. So, some FTEs that had been charged, for example, to corrections, instead, started being charged to treatment sales tax or detention sales tax. And so, it looks like the number of FTEs in corrections goes down. But really, they didn't. They only went down in the general fund. And so, to see what the actual trend in corrections overall was, you would look at page two of this report, which is all funds. And if you look at sheriff corrections there, you'll see a pretty steady growth in the last two years, few years. Let's call it, is this 20 18? In 2018, it went from 130 to 129. In 2019, that's because there was a temporary person in that office. So, that person, when the end date came and that person left the county, it went down by one. But overall, there's been pretty steady growth in corrections. Where it doesn't look that way is the general fund. And I wanted to point that out in particular so you could see the impact of direct appropriation.
But the point about which groups have actually less employees than they had in 2008, I see the assessor and treasurer fall into that category. Are there others that you'd think have that same situation?
I think that the assessor in particular.
Assessor's down, looks like by about four, and then treasurer by about three.
Yeah. General government.
The auditor is up.
Tended to go down. The auditor is up at this time. They have two temporary FTEs right now to be able to manage the conversion to the ERP. But we did add FTEs to the, that's the auditor's office. Overall, I'd say that we have pretty much recovered from pre-pandemic. And most offices and departments, if you look in total, are on an upward trend. What I don't have here and what we'll have in October is Denise used to prepare a really nice little chart that showed FTE growth compared to the population growth in the county. And you'll see that it's pretty much on par. Growth in FTEs matches, might be a little less of an upward trend than population growth, not by a lot.
Well, and then, I guess that even makes, for whatever groups, and again, I'm only seeing assessor and treasurer, but for whatever groups have actually lost FTEs, that's actually, when you factor in population growth, that's even more of a gap.
That's exactly right.
Than the gap that we're seeing.
Right, and you hear the assessor talk about how invaluable technology has been, that without the technology that the board has approved, that they never would have been able to continue services at the level that they provide. So, technology has been essential in allowing us to keep our FTE numbers down and still provide services. But at the same time, the assessor still needs people to get out and do those assessments.
Maybe, maybe that technology is where that $20 billion came from.
Uh, maybe. But it's, it's, when people like, and, and we're just using the assessor as an example, he comes and says, "I need staff." It's absolutely true. And the unfortunate thing is our revenue growth doesn't support the needs in every office and department. No one is arguing that these offices and departments have need. They absolutely do have need. We can't afford to fund everything, though. The revenue that we have.
On the, they should, they should, they should, on the, on the.
Can you show that again?
No, the overall for the, for all company employees, but you had only the general fund.
I, I had focused on the general fund, yes. So, here is the page. It's not broken down. It was kind of hard to read, and I apologize that I keep moving around, but it's here's the totals.
I think there's significant increases in public health in the last two years, but those are mainly COVID.
Pandemic.
Pandemic, so the 1293 was like, we'll draft a little bit.
Yes, we start to, to lay off those temporary employees since these numbers started. Yeah.
But even with that, if, if it just a, did a number from the 11,148 overall employees in 2005, moving to the 2023, including the COVID-19 employees, it is only 11% increase in the last 16 years. And population in the last 16 years have exceeded that increase.
Yeah.
You got any carry on me to ask more questions? Going back to what Ty brought up, kind of a simple answer, if you will. How about, how do we explain that we've got a ending, or an actual expenditure of 115 million, say, for this year? And then, next year, and, and at the same time, we've got a $35 million landing fund balance. And then next year, we're starting off with 128, 129 million. How do those variances? None of those numbers add up exactly. So, how do you explain that?
Help me understand.
Well, I mean, we end up with a certain amount, but we don't start off with that certain amount. So, we take some of it and put it somewhere, do something with it. I'm, I'm looking for a, a very simple explanation to a very complicated budget. That's kind of what I'd like to see.
If I may, what, what you asking is, the rate of expenditures doesn't match the revenues?
Well, no, the, the amount of money that people look at here, let's and say, well, gee, you got all this. How come you're cutting this, this, and this, and this? I'm just trying to come up with a explanation that's pretty simple. That's all I want.
I'm, I'm not at this point suggesting that you're, you should cut anything. I'm suggesting that we, I guess the, I don't look at taking back or redirecting money that's not being used and not going to be used ever. That's not a budget cut.
No.
So, I'm not proposing that you slash FTEs. I'm certainly not saying we need to do any kind of a layoff. I don't think that we should have to cut some of those things. But the way you're doing, getting from 115 million to 129 million is, that's that $7 million swing. COLAs, the huge amount of the risk pool, medical inflation. Those are the big three drivers. And we can't sustain, they're all ongoing costs. We can't sustain that kind of a growth over time when our revenue is coming in almost flat. And that's why we, you can't afford to fund more FTEs, more, the 7 million includes more, more FTEs, more technology, more, more fund balance in certain funds. And, and you can't afford that in the general fund. What I'm saying is you can't afford to do more. I'm not saying that you should cut anything. If you didn't fund any of the items that were asked for, you'd have a better than a two-month ending fund balance. We were tracking along beautifully.
Can I ask a question? So, this hasn't really come into play the last couple of years because our fund balance has been really good and we, we've been, we've been budgeting to meet our fund balance target, even, even on the projection. But if we played out this scenario, you know, however we end up landing this year, the principles that we adopted that said, I guess I'll explain what my understanding of it is, and you tell me if I, if I'm wrong. My understanding was that if we, in a given year, are below our fund target, balance target, 18 million, let's say. Again, right now, we're only looking to the future and saying, well, if we do these things, then we, our projecting will be there, but that's future. But if we, in a current year, and of course, in the current year, we're way above. So, this doesn't really, doesn't come into play this year in my understanding. But let's just say in a few years, and we, that fund balance drops as the model is showing, then, at the point at which the fund balance target is below 18 million, we are then, as I understand it, required to adopt a budget in which revenues, expenditures do not exceed revenue. Basically, a balanced budget for, provided that we're under that target. If we're above that target like we are now, then, like you say, we have, we've planned for this.
Right.
And we're way above, and we can spend down, and you're gonna see this discrepancy where expenditures exceed revenue.
Right.
But if we do get to this point, like if we're not responsible about that, or, or think conditions change, you know, you can be as responsible as you want, and things happen like.
As they have.
As they have. But is, is my understanding correct then? If we get to that point where we're, we're below, you know, say we're between the cash flow and the, and the fund target, we would then be, you'd be telling us, you must, according to your own policy that you adopted, present a balanced budget. We, we, we.
Yes.
We cannot make decisions where we know, based on projection, we're gonna further erode that inadequate fund target, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that is absolutely true. You would either be in a position to come in with a balanced budget if you're right at the two-month reserve, or if you're dropping below, I, that's when we'd be talking about budget cuts. I'd be telling you, it's time for budget cuts.
But we're not there.
Well, we can avoid that because we have.
We're not there because we take the long view.
Right.
And that is exactly why our bond rating went up. Is you're taking the long view based on multi-year historic trends.
We can make softer adjustments now to right the ship.
Exactly.
Go rather than.
Don't add a lot. People want more, you don't always get what you want. Make sure they've got what they need, but we don't get what we want.
Have, have you had a chance to read this? This is actually a one-page letter from Mr. Pettit on the bonds and stuff.
I have, I started to read Mr. Pettit's letter on the bonds, and I don't feel like this is an appropriate place for me to give my opinion on that.
Well, I just think it's worth thinking about.
It is absolutely not.
It's not.
I will say that.
He's accusing us to be liars, in which we're not.
I'm just trying, I'm trying to figure out what the money.
I, I had no way to hold the wall over the eyes of an S and P global financial analyst.
S and P 500.
Well, that won't hurt anything if he sends it to them, then. That, that's not, that's not an issue, I'm just wondering about the dollars.
He's absolutely wrong.
Okay, so, we're not committed on that REIT fund and stuff, that's.
We are, we are committed to the REIT fund, and it is.
That's part I'm worried about. But that won't affect.
The, our financial advisors reviewed the REIT forecast before we could go forward, which they told you they would do, and they did. And we are in a good position for the bonds.
So that won't affect what we're talking about today on, on general.
Not whatsoever.
Okay.
Okay. So.
All right.
All kinds of good news.
Forty minutes left, Robyn, what's next?
So, I will, there are just a couple of things, um, and we're gonna wrap up early. So, we just, one of the items in your packet is the priority request crosswalk. Um, and you'll remember the things that we put up on the whiteboard, Commissioner Mensah, you mentioned those yesterday. That is a wish list, if you will. Um, share my screen. Um, but we just wanted to show you, as we review the budget, um, where you can find the things that you've requested. This little worksheet doesn't have the dollar amounts on it, but you'll see them when we look at them as decisions are made. We just wanted to let you know. There's nothing in the budget about electric charging stations, but we are going to schedule a briefing on those. It's already scheduled, but I don't know the date. You asked for additional planners to increase turnaround time on the docked, yes, sir?
Excuse me, on electric charger stations, did we get to the point where they're going to be free to the public, or charged to the public?
That, that is exactly the conversation we'll have in the briefing.
Okay.
So, um, there are two packets that add funding for reducing the time to clear docked items for your consideration. Um, Josh will have a conversation with you about why they did not include anything on reducing permit backlog. There is, uh, in the revenue forecast, it increases, or, or rather decreases the levy shift. So, that's there for your consideration, 250,000 a year. Um, we did put in the Public Works budget, uh, contributions for continuation to support, uh, Capitol Lake.
Is that, that's on a wish list, though, right? That's like something that.
That is coming out of the Stormwater Fund, and we got confirmation from our attorneys that we can use the fund for that purpose.
Do, do we have confirmation, huh?
Yes, we do.
So, and that's the 5% insurance, that, they are.
7.3, I think is where we're at at this point.
That sounds.
We went from five to 10, to down to 7.3.
So, that money is in this budget, you'll see it when we review.
Something to set in, right.
Um, there.
So, that's not like a wish list item, that's like something we're basically signed up for.
Well.
Well, we haven't, we're not committed to that, and I just wanna, I mean, one of my issues on that funding source is the federal government developed the atomic bomb over in Richmond. And the state of Washington and Benton County aren't doing cleanup for that, that development. Whatever they did, I'm not saying it was good or bad, it just, they're dealing with it. The state of Washington did this whole lake thing, theoretically for the benefit of the state of Washington. And I'm trying to figure out the obligation that we have to bail the state of Washington out on that issue. So, that's one of my big concerns on that, that topic. I mean, they did it, uh, I don't know if Corps of Engineers was involved in doing or not, they've been involved all along. And that's federal. So, just a concern that, how come we're picking up, we, we get unfunded mandates all the time from the state? Now, here comes another one, basically, and that's the way I look at it. Something to think about. I'll be, I'll be doing my normal squatting if time goes on, because I'm watching out on the local taxpayer.
All right, so that will be there for your deliberation. The budget has a request from Public Works for additional funding for trails and parks. There is funding for Lake's water quality. There are additional sheriff deputies in this budget.
So you've already, I mean.
These things are all included in that 7 million, you can't afford all of them.
Going to mid-range number is a lot, is quite a few, isn't it? And what is that, right?
That, that was on the board, but I think that what the sheriff included was two deputies, two more.
Yeah, then he does money.
So, he didn't, he didn't add like 30, or any outrageous number, he added two.
Yeah, I was gonna say. Got it, got it.
Which is reasonable, but can you afford that? Even those two. Not to say he doesn't need them, again, but we had a conversation with the HR about the retention and recruitment, and what you'll see is the bonus money. But we might want to invite Maria to come in and, and talk about where we're at with the comp and class study.
Thank you. I was gonna say, I, I've been asked by a couple of offices and departments on where we're at with the market study, and so I, I would like an update to see on kind of what's going on. And I'm nervous about the market study. I'm going, you know, I guess I'll just put it out there, I'm gonna be very, that's going to be my focus, is preparing for that market study and for the results that come from that. And so with other policy issues, I won't be as willing, just because I don't know what that hit's going to be. Uh, and it makes me nervous that it's going.
You're talking about retention and recruitment?
Yeah, the market study that we're doing, and, um.
Big issue.
I, I don't want to be in the position to not be able to do anything, right? I, I want to leave, at least if we can do a phased approach to it, but at least start working on it. Um, so, I, an update would be nice for Maria.
Great, so we'll make sure that happens in October?
The, um, as you may recall, the schedule from the beginning, yeah, the market analysis will be completed early next year. So.
Early next year.
Yeah, early next year, and the intent was, when the board develops the next biannual budget, that information is ready for you.
And, and the thought is, I mean, I know it's just information, but theoretically, the board can take that information and legislatively adjust the salary ranges for different classes of employees, which would then, then shift all the budget numbers around, because different people might get more money, et cetera.
And, and it's not all or nothing. I mean, you can do nothing, or can, you can do it all, or you can do a phased approach. Yeah, I mean, because, uh, you know, I don't think the board can afford to do it all. It's just.
Well, yeah, we'll have to see it. Um, and I think your, uh, your concept to leave some room to address it is good planning. Um, but that means there's even less you can do this year.
Yeah, that's, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, you had asked about the possibility for support for childcare or daycare. Um, we're looking at that from ARPA point of view, and Jenica, is, that's something Jenica's working on.
Yeah, she's, she's working with ADC.
Right, so we'll have a conversation about ARPA specifically, so.
Actually developing a program to support it.
Right, so, just wanted to follow up on the things that we had put on the whiteboard there. And the next item that I will pull up, and I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on it, but it is the review of the financial principles that the board adopted. Um, and I just wanted you to have these handy as we roll into, um, setting targets for how much you're going to approve, and, and as you review things. So, here's the resolution that the board adopted in 2020. And the principles include the following things. Uh, in this resolution, you are going to strive to hit a two-month ending fund balance. In the second resolution that you adopted about a year later, you have set, um, that ending fund balance in place, that's no longer striving toward that. Uh, the following resolution is a stronger statement that we will maintain a two-month ending fund balance.
So this is the older one?
This is the first one, but, um, I like to go through this one, because this one has the, here are our principles when it comes to spending.
Number one was the one I was talking about, and it sounds like I was correct on that one.
Yep. You, this, this is a early one. We've gotten to the two-month ending fund balance. So, our budgets are aligned with that goal, to keep them there. Capital budgets are aligned with the CIP. We still haven't got a, um, an outcome measure-based program in place. The pandemic has, um, delayed that, but we're still trying to work toward that. Offices and resources are asked to allocate, offices and departments are asked to allocate resources um, in a way that is consistent with our strategic plans. And you see in every, uh, change request, they can align that to the county's strategic plan, which needs to be updated. You, um, review a five-year forecast, I've actually forecasted out to 2030, so it's longer than that. And you make allocations in accordance with the forecast. You have created the reserve fund, so that was an exciting step to have taken. Um, and you have a, a principle of aligning programs with funding sources in accordance with laws and the purposes for which they were enacted, so.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Since you moved on, rainy day fund, it's, it's phrased here as one month of budgeted annual expenditures. What is that, what would that be right now?
The, the, this was the goal at the time, but the resolution that you adopted later on actually set the cap at $5 billion.
Five, just five.
Yep, you set a $5 billion cap. With all due respect, now is not the time to adjust that, we'd all love to see more. But, um, I think that we're, there's 3 million in the fund now. Probably deposit another half a million in the upcoming year, based on the calculations, the way we calculate the deposit every year, so we're actually ahead of schedule when we wanted to get 5 million in it. We're doing well.
Just for, and, and I'm not, I'm not challenging any of that, but just for my information, when we did, when we did it this way, and our target was one month of annual expenditure, what is that?
Uh, that would be probably around 10 million.
Okay. Because that's annual expenditure of the general fund?
Mm-hmm.
Of the 14 million-ish, okay.
Uh-huh.
Got it.
Um, okay, so, we're aligning our programs appropriately. Uh, number eight is not clearly worded, but it is all about spending, uh, one-time money on one-time items, and aligning ongoing expenditures, um, to ongoing revenues. Uh, it also talks about, we don't want to have inappropriate surpluses or deficits. And it's easier to describe an inappropriate deficit than an inappropriate surplus, but as great as it is to have $39 million fund balance, that's a lot of money in the bank. A two-month reserve is right about the right spot to, to hit. Uh, any money over that means we're collecting too much taxes, or we're just not providing the services that we ought to be paying for. So, there's a sweet spot in there. Number nine is about ongoing, um, costs being paid with ongoing revenue. One-time costs, one-time revenue should only be spent. And that stated again in number 12. Yep, one-time revenue should not be used for ongoing costs. There's a principle that we monitor our budgets, we do that. We strive to maintain a bond rating of double A or higher, so that's a huge achievement, that we've got the bump up. And then, um, the assurance of a comprehensive financial system. We are in the midst of the ERP. It's been a huge lift and a bit of a challenge. But we are on track to get it up and running at the end of the year, so that's a pretty exciting thing, too. So those are your principles to bear in mind as you choose how much you want to spend. And that's pretty much all I had for today. We'll come back and look at more detail on Monday.
You want more?
So my service has been running all day, and I'm at 32% still, it's not bad. How many hours is that, five hours?
That's great.
So it gets about maybe seven, I, I think this is better than it's been to me.
White's doing it, dying on it, yes.
Yeah, this is the, and, uh, you know, struggling, because even drew the battery out.
Let me try this thing, just for the heck of it.
It probably wasn't charged all the way, that's why it's not all the way, it's probably gonna charge overnight, huh?
Because I mean, it was, and then it, you know, it bleaches, as it says.
All right. Wrap-up comments?
Thank you.
A lot of information, more to come.
More to come, more good news.
And then, I think you're gonna torture us with the reviewing the agenda, so.
I didn't realize that was a torture.
Okay, it is 2:07 PM. Thank you very much. We will be back with budget, another budget session on Monday. So, we are adjourned.